Ready? Ready? Okay. All right. Board of County Commissioners, Bradford County, Florida. It's May sixth, twenty twenty five. It is nine thirty. This time I'm going to ask Commissioner Spooner to open us up in prayer and flag salute.
May we bow? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the wonderful season that you brought before us. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. Thank you, dear Lord, for each and every one that is here today, those who may be listening online, those who desire to be here but couldn't be. Father, we ask that you help to guide us in our execution of the business that we have before us today. Let us be receptive to those who have come before us. Let us be respectful of one another as the presentations are presented. And help us, dear Lord, to carry out the business in a fashion that is pleasing in your sight. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item we have is public comments. I've got two public comments. The first one is Mr. Paul Steele.
Paul Steele, one four one six seven Southwest one hundred first Avenue, Stark. I'm coming this morning to address an issue that's on your consent agenda. It's the approval of the Splash Bash expenditure from the TDC. When I read the agenda and after reading the article in the Bradford Telegraph about the Fair Association and the transfer of land to the Friends of the Agricultural Fair and Youth Show, I became a little bit concerned about the actual application that's in your packet. The application apparently was made by the Bradford County Fair Association. I'm not sure whether they still exist. Then later on, in the document that was produced by the CDC, it apparently the funds are to go to an organization that may not be correctly listed there. The name is, agriculture was left out of the name of the Friends group, and the EIN number doesn't match the Friends EIN number. So I'm just suggesting that you may want to send that one back if there's time to get it corrected so that you don't have this incorrect information in your allocation of this, I think it's five thousand five hundred dollars to the Friends of the Agricultural Fair and Youth Associated Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Next is Mr. Strong.
Good morning, he took my thunder. Good morning, my name is Viander Strong. What's up, it's about five thirty. Lottie. So today, we have three prisons and probation and parole. On April first, the state attorney came in, he did a presentation. And did he tell the board about the cost of the cases from the Department of Corrections that included those three prisons and probation and parole that come into court each week? That he is also, that also takes up those costs coming into the county, that the county shares a cost also, separate from what the county also pays for. That's number one. Number two is, can the sheriff, which I talked to the sheriff briefly, come in and take over Lottie PD? The sheriff does the work anyway. We have a police department in Lottie that doesn't care about the citizens in Lottie anymore. We're paying for nothing. Number three, part of it was what Mr. Steele said, and the Fair Association has proven to be smoke and mirrors. It seems like Mr. Milner was playing in the county's face, and he continues to play in our face. This is what happens when you mix business and friendship. You find out that you don't have any friends, they're only associates. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, that's all the public comment cards I have. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's staff's recommendation that we pull item I from the consent agenda.
All righty. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item I?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Do you have a motion from Commissioner Thompson?
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Andrews. Any other questions?
Yes. Mr. Conigay and our attorney, so the Splash Bash, noting here is to the Tourism Development Council. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am, the money would go there, but it's at the request of the Fair Association.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor by a son of I?
Aye.
I? Motion carries five oh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think to follow up on Commissioner Spooner's point, I think it's fair, the public comments, I thought were well taken by both of the speakers in that I think it's fair to take a pause on anything associated with requests from the Fair Association until a new board's in place. And we can, it doesn't mean that this item will not come back at a future date once the board has the proper individuals on it pursuant to the agreement that this board approved with the appointees being appointed by this board. And then if that still is the direction with this newly constituted board that you want to go in, making that application or whatever else, then that's something that we can discuss at that time. For right now, I think keeping the status quo and not doing anything new until the board is properly in place is the prudent course of action.
Okay, and just one other, I guess, question. There were a number of, I guess, original intended events to occur despite whatever board and, but those events that we had in our agreement that we would allow to happen, that were known community events such as the Splash event, was, I thought was one of those, that we would allow those events to happen.
And I think if it's requested, it'll just have to be requested by someone else.
Yeah.
And not those. Yeah, I think that it's fair to say that, I mean, I understand what was in the agreement, but I think it's fair to say that everything needs to be put on pause until you get your people in place.
Okay.
And I wouldn't, I mean, I'm sorry that the community is having to deal with this by the actions of folks on the Fair Association Board that have required us to take this pause until you get the new board in place. It's unfortunate that those decisions were made.
Yes, and I accept that. And then I also understand that they can come, the Fair Association, our new constituted board can come back and make the requests so that those events can still happen.
For the sake of the community, which is the purpose of the Fair Association in the first place, to serve the community and to serve the public, I certainly would hope that those events go forward because that's the very purpose of the Fair Association. It would be great for everyone to enjoy everything in due course, and that certainly would be this commission's goal, as y'all have stated previously and continually, and that's all you're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
It's the events to happen, and it'd be done in a manner consistent with principles of good government. That's all I've ever heard from any of you, and that's certainly where we're coming from.
I'd just like to clear up, if I could, for a second.
Sure.
They're still going to receive their regular funding from tourist development because I was under the impression that's the way they pay the light bill out there and stuff. The regular funding? I understood they get them out from TDC every month.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that, no.
Yeah, and I'm on the board, I'm not aware.
Are you sure, sure of that?
Sounds like need to have a conversation with them.
Yeah, I'm fairly confident that TDC doesn't make recurring payments to the Fair Association.
Okay, so there's enough in there to keep the light bills called up and such as that right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, okay, moving on, item four.
Let me be, there's, it's my understanding, based on just hearsay that I heard this morning, that there is enough money in the Fair Association's bank account to pay a light bill, correct? But I will just say on the record, if anybody's here from the Fair Association, do not touch a dollar in that account until this board gets constituted.
Thank you. All right, item four, Lieutenant David Weeks.
And while he's getting set up, I just want to, you know, say this has been one year, May first of twenty twenty four was when the Community Paramedicine Program was started. You all entrusted us with those funds for the opioid abatement settlement funds. And I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that you all have seen over the past year that we've been able to put those funds to good use. You're seeing results of where that funding's been put, and you're actually, like I said, you're seeing your money put to work and seeing the outcomes that we're looking for. So certainly appreciate all the work that Lieutenant Weeks has done over the past year. Chief Rogers has been a big part of this program as well. Thing has been very successful, and I'm certainly proud of everything he's been able to accomplish over the past year. And it's pretty remarkable that this has all happened in one year, but it seems like it's been going on for quite some time, but it's twelve months, so I'll let you get to it. But just want to say thank you for all your hard work publicly.
Good morning. Like Chief Rogers said, or Chief Carter, I'm sorry, it's been a very busy year. It's flown by, and we've made a lot of progress, and I'm happy with where we're at, and today we'll see a little bit of it. So annual CRP calls for service were three hundred and two. This is actual calls where I went out in the field, whether it be helping with an oxygen machine, a substance abuse call, an overdose, something like that. So as you can see, it's been very, very busy. So I'll just start by going over some of the main topics that we cover, the first one being chronic disease management. So some of the things that we provided assistance with this year are, excuse me, diabetes management, blood pressure monitoring, wound care and management, transportation services, telehealth services, and then accessibility needs. Throughout the year, we have a total of fifty-two ED redirects logged. So that's where we were called to a patient who wanted to go to the emergency room. We got there, we were able to figure out that this patient's problem can be handled, whether it was they needed help with their O two regulator, maybe telehealth could help that patient or something along those lines. And then we also had twenty-eight telehealth visits through our medical director, Dr. Odom. He's been very supportive of the program. If we had a patient who needed a prescription but didn't necessarily need to go to the hospital, he would have worked with that patient to get that medicine. So this is an actual case study. I'll preface it with any photos that you see in this presentation have been approved by the patients to be used for these purposes. So this was an elderly male, he lived alone, noncompliant with his medications for months. Severe diabetes, there was no running water, no electricity, very bad shape the residence that he was living in. So he utilized our services eight times in a three-month period prior to me taking on his case. After the case, he called a total of three times, so that's a sixty-two percent call reduction. And this is some of the things that we did for him. So two of the immediate needs that we identified were obviously the housing situation. Working with Corporal Ward from the Sheriff's Office, it was determined that the house was not habitable by any means. The second of that would be his chronic disease management, his diabetes. He had been noncompliant with his medications for months, as a result, his health was beginning to suffer. So action plan, first and foremost was temporary housing. We identified that we really needed to get him out of that house. So working with Elder Options and DCF, we were able to put him up into a local hotel for about two weeks. During that time, we got him with Swan River Economic Council, and they provided him food. Medication was actually fulfilled through Dr. Odom through one of those telehealth visits that I was talking about. We were able to get his prescriptions reinstated. For long-term housing, working with Adult Social Services, we opened up a case or two on him. And ultimately, we were able to get him placed in a local assisted living facility. And then independence, so the patient had no valid ID, his insurance had lapsed. So I actually met him at the DMV one day, walked him through the steps of getting his license renewed. And then we also helped him fill out the paperwork to get his insurance back into place. So fall prevention, this is another big topic. Lately, the talk of the town's been our matter of balance course. We've had a very good turnout. About twenty-three people have been enrolled and actually still ongoing at this time. Fall prevention measures, so I've talked about a few of the projects throughout the year that we've done with some of the local church groups. This is one of those projects, just one of the wheelchair ramp builds that we did. We also still do in-home fall assessments. We address any accessibility concerns, whether that's helping make their home ADA compliant, if they need shower rails, a shower seat, something like that. And then we're still in the process of connecting patients to rehabilitation services. Substance abuse prevention, obviously, that's the big topic, the big part of the program. When we first started, one of our primary initiatives was the naloxin cabinets that were provided free of charge through the Hanley Foundation. Those are still ongoing, they're still being placed throughout the county and the cities. And again, these are available twenty-four seven, and they're remaining stocked at all times. Lots of community outreach, you've probably seen us out at quite a few different community events. We're handing out our Narcan kits, just having that conversation with people about the issues of substance abuse. This summer, we're also going to start, excuse me, doing some youth education with Upward Bound. We're going to start teaching some of our Narcan courses, overdose awareness and things like that. So these are just some of our rough stats throughout the year. We do have a drug intake program that's fairly controlled, so we treat it like any other type of controlled medication. Anybody from the community is able to come to the fire station, drop off any expired or excess opioids that we have. We always have a witness with us, we have them sign, and we sign that we're intaking a certain amount of medication, and then we destroy it for them. We've handed out five hundred Narcan boxes, then a hundred and twenty-five Narcan kits. So the difference between the Narcan boxes and kits are the kits are the little bags that I originally brought you guys early into the previous year. It's got some pamphlet information and stuff like that. Those kits are generally provided on scene to families or people who are actually experiencing overdose. And we have five cabinets still installed throughout the county. And then so far, we've hosted two community Narcan courses. And that's going to be an ongoing, we're looking at either monthly or every other month thing where we'll offer a community course, people can sign up, learn about Narcan, and then leave home with them. Is this another case study? And I call it Patient Zero because this was our very first patient ever. It's a thirty-four-year-old male with a history of chronic substance abuse. So he was initially identified through a crew referral on an actual overdose call. On the initial visit that I had with him, we enrolled him into the program immediately. There were a few major concerns that we had with this gentleman. One, he was living alone with no family support system at the time. Two, he hadn't had a primary care visit in over ten years. So one of the first things we did was get him set up for a primary care appointment. I actually met him at the doctor's office to make sure that he was able to get signed in, and that that process went smooth. He did express interest on wanting to work. He had a background in website design and computer engineering. So we helped get him connected with Career Source here in town. His insurance had also lapsed, so we helped get that reestablished. He did have a prescription for MAT services prior to us, but due to the insurance, we had to get that reinstated. And then he ended up moving to Alachua County, so what we did was we got him connected with Gainesville Fire Rescues Program just to ensure that there is a continuity of care after leaving our area. And then we actually worked to help reestablish that family support. I can tell you for the longest time, I was fielding phone calls from his mother, from him, from his father, just trying to kind of be the liaison between that. Because as you guys know, the family dynamics play a big role in the recovery of these patients. Community engagement. So these are just some of the major projects that we've talked about. This is the large ramp that we completed earlier in the year. And you'll probably recognize some of these faces, Mr. Mike Brown and a few of the other guys from some of the local churches that help us out. And the community hubs, we've been trying to remain active, you know, at the Hampton Hubs, the Lottie Hubs, the RJ Center Hubs. Public relations, we've got a lot of exposure. We do have two conferences that we're involved in that we're excited about. First one's going to be this month, it's called the Biannual Rural Mental Health and Substance Abuse Summit Panel. And it will actually be on one of the Community Paramedicine panels that they're hosting there. And then we've been invited to present at the, they call it the Arden, or the Regional Drug Epidemiology Network. And that'll be later in the year, we'll kind of just give an overview of our program, go over our MAT program a little bit, answer any questions that they may have. The medication-assisted treatment, I don't think I've presented this to you guys yet. This is something new that we've started about a month ago. This is kind of the next thing in community paramedicine. If you look around at the other counties, everybody's starting to do it because the science and the stats are there that this is really what makes a difference for these patients. So this is kind of how our process works. The patients referred to us, so a patient can either self-refer through an online QR code that we have listed on a number of pamphlets that we hand out. They can be referred by a friend, a family member, or by a crew member. Meridian has sent us over a referral already, really any organization. Once that person's been referred, we'll meet with that patient to determine the eligibility. So the packets that I've handed you guys, that's just a brief part of the paperwork that we're filling out. There's quite a few stipulations that a patient has to have in order to qualify for the program, There's quite a few stipulations that a patient has to have in order to qualify for the program, um, including, you know, medical background, things of that nature. So if that patient's eligible to receive treatment, we'll actually begin that treatment in the field. Um, I can tell you our first patient that we treated in the program, we met at his residence using our, our mobile health unit, so the, the book mobile that we've renovated. When we dose these patients, it's an everyday thing and we try to dose that patient at around the same time. So our dosing hours that we've established is between the hours, excuse me, of one to three PM. That's Monday through Sunday, seven days a week. So the same day that we dose them, that initial time, we're immediately getting them referred to Meridian. Um, we've actually been timing it to where me and Brooke, she's the peer support specialist from Meridian, she's actually been going out in the field with me. And while I'm dosing that patient, she'll be on the phone with Meridian, getting that appointment set up and established for them. Um, what we also do that same day visit is if they're not currently receiving primary care or if they haven't been to one in a while, we're gonna go ahead and get them set up for one of those as well, either through Palms Medical Group or the Health Department. So this is just some of the inclusion criteria. Again, there's a lot more than just this, this is just some of the basic ones. First and foremost, the patient has a history of opiate dependence with a noted presence of withdrawal symptoms with absence of use. Patient has a history of chronic opioid use, a history of drug overdose or recent opioid overdose, or is experiencing active withdrawals from opioid use. Patient is at a high possibility of relapse. And then patient is willing to engage in recovery at a certified outpatient program. Number four, I would say is the most important one. The person really has to be willing to get help and they want to have to be able to heal. So the treatment overview, this is kind of how it looks like if we go to your house to dose you. So first and foremost, you're, you're being evaluated, we're getting a basic set of idols and then in that packet, you see some of the assessment scores that we use. We're using Suboxone, so Suboxone is a sublingual film, it's placed on the tongue. Um, and we're giving them an initial dose first. We're using a assessment in there to look at what level they're at following that dose. And depending on where they're at, we may give them a, a second dose of it. Typically, you'll find if a patient's been through treatment before, they kind of know what dose works for them. And typically, we will stick with that. So following the, the administration of that medication, we're gonna monitor them for at least fifteen minutes. And that's just to make sure there's no adverse reactions or anything like that. And then as I mentioned on the initial visit, um, we're making sure that they have an appointment set up with Meridian. And two, they have a primary care appointment, either scheduled or, or they're actively saying one. And then this is also in the packet, I just wanted to show it. This is uh, called the COWS Assessment, so this is something we look at to kind of judge how bad of withdrawal symptoms a patient's going through. And you'll see that each box has a, a numerical value associated with it. So we're looking at sweating, restlessness, pupil sizes, uh, things like that. And that gives us a good idea of, is this patient in severe withdrawals, moderate withdrawals, mild withdrawals, or maybe not, not any symptoms at all at the time. And then looking ahead, so some of you guys may be familiar with what Care Portal is. I actually ran into this at a conference two weeks ago at Cape Canaveral, one of the Mobile Integrated Health Conferences. It's essentially a community portal, um, that churches get involved in and other organizations. So the idea of it is, if we have a patient who say needs help with paying their utility bill, we typically work with Catholic charities, but sometimes that money runs out or they don't have enough money. Um, we could play, we could first vet that concern or vet that need for that patient, place this on the portal and from there, any churches that are involved on that portal can go on there and say, we'll be able to help out this month, or we'll be able to help out with this need. And from there, it's directly from the church organization to the patient, so it cuts out the middleman. Um, we're also gonna be looking at the addition of a social worker, a case manager. I think this is an important missing puzzle piece that we have. Um, you know, as the program builds, we're bringing on more and more patients. And I want to make sure that we're able to keep up and continue to provide that, that good level of care that we've come to see. Um, and then just continue to expand our, our MAT program. It's fairly new, so I don't think the word's out there as much as it should be yet, but we're really hitting it. We're, you know, passing out pamphlets, we're talking to all the different organizations. Um, really just trying to get the word out there. And then just continuing to form more community partnerships, that, that's the big thing is working with, you know, these different organizations and companies that are really willing to help these people. I would say that's the most important part of this entire process, is it really takes a, a village sometimes to, to help. Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm very happy with where we're at. I think we've made great progress in just a year and uh, I'm very excited about this next year. We've got some big things planned and with that, I'll entertain any questions you guys may have.
Just a comment from Mr. Lieutenant of Weeks, just to thank you for your efforts in um, programs and you are seeing throughout the community and working um, with this issue of substance abuse. And I appreciate your work with the combination of Meridian and getting um, treatment uh, for the people that are out there. I just wanted to say thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Kind of want to echo off that, just thank you for a job well done, you guys, when you set up something and you start working. The recognition that you always receive um, does a lot for your entire organization, but thank you for what you've done.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much and you're definitely changing people's lives.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to item five, the clerk's report.
We have nothing this week.
Okay. Um, moving on to number seven, county ma- All right. The sheriff's report.
Sheriff, excuse me, I've got to run. Yeah, I know you. I'm here this morning to basically bring up something, it's uh, I can tell you since the Telegraph, Mr. Martin wrote the article in Telegraph about the fair, uh, as you can see this morning, public comments. I've been overwhelmed. And each day I'm, I'm looked at by constituents, people in the community saying, Sheriff, what are y'all doing? Is this a crime? How'd they do that? I don't know. They ask questions that I can't answer. I'm gonna tell you something, it grinds my gears, turns my face red, makes my freckles glow. I'm gonna tell you, it pisses me off. To think that somebody's entitled to something that wasn't theirs. That fair belongs to the Bradford Fair Association and the citizens of this community. To think that somebody thinks they're entitled enough that they can, in my opinion, it's just gore, not saying it's legal, illegal, whatever it is, even if they could do it, doesn't make it right. If they wanted to do that, go out and raise your money and buy your own, because that was purchased with fair association monies. But I want us all to be on the same canvas, because I have been in touch with the authorities. I've been in touch with the Agriculture Commissioner directly. I'm coming with an ass today. I'm gonna tell you where we're at, so everybody says the sheriff said this, the sheriff said that, this person. All of us here are gonna hear the same thing. And I've been dwelling into it, fact-finding and working with the proper authorities. Now, at the end of this, I hope they find it in their heart to do the right thing and return what wasn't theirs. I truly do, but if not, I want the support of this commission to seek every legal avenue possible, whether it be civil, criminal, or both. Because when you look at the fair, that fair association is formulated, came from the, the veterans of the American Legion back in the forties and incorporated in nineteen fifty-one. And they follow under State Statute six sixteen, which governs fairs under the Department of Agriculture and the state fair. So I want us to know just a few things, so we're all along that same canvas. And things that I found, it talks about having to follow the, the, and I'm gonna get into the charter in just a minute. But certain little things, amount of indebtedness that a fair can take on. By State Statute, it must be in your charter. And I'll get to our charter in just a minute, how much indebtedness they could take on. That wasn't followed. I found in State Statute six sixteen oh seven, a member, officer, director, or trustee of a fair association is not personally liable for any of the indebtedness of the association and money or property the fair association may not be distributed as profits or dividends amongst its members, officers, or trustees. All money and property of the association, except that necessary for the payment of just debts and liabilities or public property, shall be administered by the association as trustee and shall be used exclusively for the legitimate purposes of the association. So long as they are used for that purpose, all money and property of the association are exempt from forms of taxation, including special assessments. I've got a few notes here I made, just so we're, not for sake of time, so you can see while I'm upset.
Sure, you're, you're good sheriff, you take your time, you're good.
It also states in there, the use of the buildings. That no more than twenty percent of buildings may be used other than anything but for the fair association, when you can't lease, rent, those type things. Now I want to make something clear. You, the board, nor any commissioner, the church keeps coming up. That church has been a lifesaver for us in public safety. Every time we've called upon that church, their membership, they have gone out of their way to serve us in this community. In times of storms, other events, they have stepped up. There's only been one person get in the way. And I'll get into that in just a minute. They have been great, great friends and neighbors, so I don't want to say anything disparaging toward that. And they have volunteered so we didn't have to use other officials in times of health assistance and times of storm and special needs patients and those type things. So the Department should administer enforcement provision, this chapter is in rules adopted pursuant thereto. But here lies some of my authority, what I'm looking into before I forward it to the proper authorities. It is the duty of each state attorney, law enforcement officer defined by chapter nine forty-three, and other appropriate county and municipal officers to enforce this chapter and the rules adopted. So there's, there's some of my authorities, I'm getting all the facts, timelines placed together in regards to it. That's just some of the things that you'll find in this forty-page document of six sixteen, are the rules that we're supposed to be playing by, laws that we're gonna find out obviously weren't being followed, whether intentionally or not. You can go online and you see the Bradford County Fair Association is listed as a nonprofit. However, they're a different type of nonprofit. Donations this organization are not tax deductible. Hence, we'll get into the other nonprofit organized later. I've got all their tax returns, what they say their net in, revenue was, what their expenses were and what their net income was. And so the last few years when I changed presidents, we've gone into the negative. There's their organization summary and more tax documents. Now before I go any further, before they took this loan out in twenty nineteen, I sat in this very room within Senator Rob Bradley and State Representative Bobby Payne. They'd gotten a large sum of allotment of money for appropriations to build the county's only certified shelter in times of storm. Taxpayers' dollars and appropriations from the state, that's what it's supposed to be useful. And it became an asset to the fair, association. But in this very room, when they asked about trying to finish it up, remember COVID came along. The governor used those monies that year because none of us knew, we were all scared to death. We didn't know what the hell we were facing. And it was scary. They told us, don't expect no appropriations, and I was in this very room when they were told, you can't use appropriations to pay back loans, because they wanted a loan to move forward. That was said, so it's not the state's fault for any monetary mishaps, misjudgments, misfeasance, malfeasance that happened at the fair with the fair association. That man was told in this very room, and that was Dale Woodruff. I was here and I was a witness, so take the state off the table. For somebody to blame the state was wrong, misleading. And they knew that. However, we talk about the charter. I have a copy of that charter here. Went in, twenty nineteen, on October twenty-third, they filed their domestic nonprofit filing with the state. They attached that very charter and what it says in that charter. But then again, on October twenty-fourth, they signed a million and a half dollar loan with Community State Bank at the time. They can't say what they, to know what was in his charter. They had just recently filed it. Very smart individuals and I know they can read. The dates and all are on this document, which will be forwarded to the proper authorities with their names, Fair Association President, October twenty-third, twenty nineteen. You look through here, and I just highlighted a couple of the key factors. The sole object of the association is public service. That there has been provided for the purpose of this association, that's in their own charter. Talk about membership, because everything they voted on, they say they voted on or did, they've not had a quorum. This charter says you shall have a minimum of twenty members and no more than fifty members in this charter. So it means we gotta do some add to our board membership until we, we can fix or you can do an amendment and adjust that, but it has to go for a circuit judge, has to be advertised properly in the Telegraph. The highest amount of liability to which the corporation may at any time subject itself shall not exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Now they knew this the day before, or should have known, they filed and applied for that loan. It wasn't like it'd been hidden somewhere and they didn't see it and couldn't find it. They had done the updates to this charter, they could have. What was the hurry? Because here's that very loan. That very loan, if you look at the date of it, remember the dates I told you, describes the property. Ten twenty-four. They applied with this charter on ten twenty-three. Endless, when they applied for that loan, which remember now it went into foreclosure. When things go into foreclosure, we got an attorney room, there's a lot of things you can't do. It's like going through a divorce, the minute something's filed, you can't start getting rid of assets. Same way in foreclosure, you gotta be careful. The address of seventeen two nine, two nine five North US Highway three oh one, Stark, Florida. Legal description, see attached, which is here. Together, this legal description, together with all easements, appurtenances, I'm public educated, I'm not pronouncing that right, I'm sure. Abutting streets, alleys, improvements, buildings, fixtures, tenements, herediments, equipment, rents, rents, pearl, income, profits, and royalties, personal goods of whatever description and all other rights and privileges, including all mineral, oil, gas, water rights, may now or at any time in the future be located on or used in connection with the above described real property, payment awards, amount received for eminent domain, amounts received from any and all insurance payments and timber, which may now or later be located, situated, affixed, or used in connection with therein called property. Remember, it was the fair association. Even though that eight acres is not involved in this, that eight acres is part of the association, controlled by the association. Then, fast forward, this commission, and I took some heat for it. People running their mouth, talking about things they didn't know. I asked the commission, I said, hey, I was at breakfast, where I get a lot of my intelligence throughout the community, with some ex-commissioners and ex-judges and ex-elected officials. The thing came up, said, hey, we heard the, the fair's in foreclosure, Community State Bank, remember they're changing to DLP. After the commission meeting, I approached, have y'all heard any of this? I had not heard, I told the people, I ain't heard any of that. Y'all directed the county manager to inquire and find out. That's an asset to our community. I grew up here. I showed animals here, I've milked goats here, I've chased greased pigs here. My kids grew up here in that fair. Myself and y'all included. Myself and y'all included, everybody here has donated hundreds or even thousands of dollars to the kids of this community. That's what it's for. And anybody that think that they can take it for their own entitlement, shame on them and they should hang their head in shame. I don't give a damn who they are, excuse my language, Chairman, I told you, correct me if I get out of line, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about this. After the kindness, y'all stepped up to do the right thing, for whatever reason, they declined that offer. They make a resolution for the president to negotiate, someone else taking up that note. Got some mighty fine offers, eight percent, and when it went into foreclosure, twenty-four point nine nine percent. That's a pretty sweet deal, their friend, but I am thankful Jimmy Gissey just wanted his money back because he loves Bradford County, because he wasn't told the whole truth. I say he was lied to, but something happened, and he called the note, which was too mature this year anyway. How are they going to pay back that note? Just a little over a year. I, I don't know, we're looking into that too. But they do that, takes up the note, but in here, it encompasses the same things that are written in the original note. All properties, equipment, rents, liabilities. Now, supposedly somewhere in and around April seventh, they held a meeting, which by the way, wasn't published. To this date, no minutes of that meeting, which if you go back and look at case law and Supreme Court ruling, the minutes shall be looked at upon request, whether they're finished or not, by the way, and I've got that, those opinions and rulings in here. They make things where they transfer supposedly money, supposedly equipment, a tractor, lawnmower, other equipment, and eight acres of property to friends of the fair. I don't call that being friend. What in theirs for the given? What entitlement did they have that they could do better than what the fair association was going to do? It's almost, and that's just a Gordon thinking, what people are calling a scheme to defraud, because they didn't negotiate with you and our attorney fairly. And I give credit to our county manager, he's been behind with every, everything I've called him on, things we're looking into, documents, and I can tell you, in working with him, he's got the same feeling I got. They set out to pull a fast one on y'all. They didn't tell us in negotiations they were planning on cutting out eight acres of property and taking equipment and possibly cash, don't know, we just got all the bank stuff yesterday, we're looking into that, and so were the other agency, we're getting copies of all that, and some other past accounts, they mysteriously closed. Lot of investigations still to be done, but I'm getting a timeline together, some facts for the appropriate authorities, because I have talked directly with the ag commissioner, because directly talking with other attorneys and the statewide prosecutor, and I've talked with our state attorney. If it looks like a duck, talks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. Now I'm hoping after this, I said it publicly, I'm not whispering it in somebody's ear, telling one person one thing, I'm telling this publicly. I'm asking for your support going forward on the civil side, I'm gladly going forward in everything I can do if there's anything criminal, but even if there's not, what they did was not right. The warranty deed, when they signed that agreement, they negotiated, backed out of once or twice, cost us nearly eleven hundred dollars a day, by the way, in interest, as they drugged their feet. To the time we could have first took this note over, to the day we signed this deed, it cost the taxpayers of this county about three hundred thousand dollars. You're doing us a favor? They did us no favors. And I don't care in the eyes of anybody, especially God, it's wrong. Why'd they do it? I don't have that answer. Some speculate, I got my own speculations. But we did that, that's the eleventh, which gave us their four board members. Didn't have a quorum, didn't have a quorum on the seventh emergency meeting either, that wasn't published, no minutes published, meeting wasn't published. Remember, they got to operate in sunshine, just like we do, because they receive public funds. I got that case law here, got the Attorney General's opinion here. They didn't do it, hadn't been doing it. They just pretty much did what they did when they wanted to do and did whatever they wanted to do. It became their own personal, I think it became personal, that's the reason they tried to do part commission, without letting you know they did that, because that would have changed what y'all's thought on wasn't purchasing the property. They didn't do it in fairness, and they didn't do it in the light. It's wrong. So on special warranty on the seventeenth, they get out and file a quick claim deed to give it notarized, they don't come to the county manager's office, they don't go to the clerk's office, and I'll show you some texts back and forth, they were still heartburn from that first time we offered, because what our clerk of court, Denny Thompson, said was true and correct. If the taxpayer dollars were going to be used, we needed to be in control, he wanted to hold their feet to the fire. I'll show you some of that text message. So they still had a burden or saddle for some of that, and trying to do some of the negotiation, but what couldn't mention, what Denny Thompson said, our clerk, was true, accurate, and spot on. So this was their last act of vengeance. They're no friends of the fair, so they go down there, this is signed on the seventeenth, remember, there's no authority after the eleventh, not to mention that part that was in foreclosure, they transferred their assets of, well, it was in the foreclosure, read the law on that, our attorney can advise something like that as well. It's a no-no. It signed off Bob Milner and Chuck Kramer, four seventeen twenty-five, Milner listed as president, Chuck Kramer listed as a treasurer. They were no longer those as of the eleventh. We signed what they negotiated, but they weren't fair. They tried to pull a quick one, a scheme. Who, anybody left them in charge? Citizens didn't get a vote in it. The people attend that fair, show their animals, they didn't get a say-so in it. So it's fashion, work has been done for Bradford County. I also have the foreclosure, which gave them the original lender's note about the properties and everything entitled to it, records laws of fair association. They've not followed none of them. Of course, they didn't have a board like they were supposed to, didn't publish meetings like they're supposed to, didn't do a lot of things they were supposed to do. I think civilly, we get our board in place, need to move forward with civil action, because that's the fair association. Somebody was in that meeting says, well, they said, well, and I'm going to put it out in case y'all hear, because I know it to be a lie, that they had talked to Jason Dodge and Jason Dodge had said, we didn't need that equipment. Well, it wasn't the county's equipment, it was the fair association's equipment. Jason Dodge is sure, he's never had that conversation. Lot of misleading things there to get some of the people on that board to vote, and why you'd give your money away when you still got to have the funds to operate, to still be a county fair. The property's in the county's name, but it's still the Bradford County Fair and their association to continue what we've been gladly doing since nineteen fifty-one in this charter. Prior to that was the American Legion. Lot of history, big part of our community. And the person to claim that they don't know what they intend to do with that piece of property as friends of the fair, have no idea, said what they might do with it, but didn't have no knowledge and garnered the vote as the president of that nonprofit. It's right there. Not saying we've been lied to, but we sure weren't told the truth. They left a lot of things out, they didn't negotiate in fairness. That's the reason I wanted to say it publicly, so the citizens can know what I'm doing, you know what I'm doing, and I'm asking your support as we get that board together as soon as we can, to move forward with the civil action while we're moving forward with the legal action, and I'll get this to the proper authorities, because if I, it wouldn't be fair for me to investigate, could I be a little biased? Because in my opinion, and this is Gordon's opinion, not the sheriff, but in Gordon's opinion, it was downright dirty, it was downright da, uh, wrong, and how can you hang your head up high knowing what you did to our community for your own personal entitlement? I'm hoping for any questions y'all may have that I can answer.
Not, not any question, just a comment. This board and I, we all enter into an agreement with, with the expectation of integrity, we did it for the love of our community and so that we will have something to share with the community that we are accustomed to having, so I, I'm very disappointed at the actions that were taken, and I think it's important that we proceed with all Godspeed to remedy the situation and correct what was done and to return all properties to the appropriate ownership for this community. It's there for the use for our community and, and that's what we're supposed to all be about. So that, I, I'm disappointed.
And, and the law says you can give from one nonprofit to another, but there's a catch. We're on a typical nonprofit, the fair association, they underwrite all the, the agriculture commission under the state fair and their guidelines and rule, that's the reason I couldn't write a check to them and it'd be tax deductible. I'm sure the nonprofit was set up so people could write a check to be used for the fair, maybe give to kids, and they could use it as a tax deductible donation, just as we have our nonprofit that we have set up. I think that may have been the intent, but it was their last fell swoop of, we'll just transfer this stuff. Why would the fair association vote to give all their assets away to another nonprofit that's wanting to try to find some way to benefit? It has no control over, no oversight of it. It doesn't make any logical sense. I'm just saying I'm passionate about it, and I think Miss Spooner's on the right track as we move forward and the county manager, we have spent hours going through documents, trying to find the documents needed, the clerk's office stepped up and got some of the things we needed, looking through the bank accounts now, but everybody asking, where did the money go? I don't know, they've never published it publicly. You know what I'm saying, they don't advertise their meetings, not that I've seen, I've never seen the minutes of meetings. All those type things that have not been done, it's been so mismanaged. In the last three or four years, they started losing money. When you look back through those tax documents, and we got a link to it to print all the tax years back, where it was profitable? They got theirself in this mismanagement deal. When they ever stepped it and didn't do what they advised by our state representative and our state senator sitting in this very room and says, you can't do that, they decided to do it anyway. I wouldn't want to manage in any thing. You look at what's been done. Got some nice facilities, but that's because of appropriations that you, the board of county commissioners helped do, us with the sheriff's offices vision emergency management wrote those letters, that that would be our emergency management shelter. We were this close to losing that million, multi-million dollar building, this close. So why would we spend? Because we have to have that, God forbid we ever need, I hope we never do. I hope we get that. They did some things, they signed contracts, you know, prior to them leaving out, they did a lot of things, and it wasn't in the best interest of the fair association, and it sure wasn't in the best interest of their community, their county commissioners. They didn't open it up to us when we were doing those negotiations. Why didn't that, why didn't that openly tell us that? They had a scheme in place, and to say they don't know what the hell they're going to do with that piece? You're listed as the president, or what would you even bring the vote up for? Want to move forward all legal action we can.
And, and Mr. Chair, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the funds, property of, you know, assets for our county and for our residents, the, the, the people hold us responsible and accountable, and so we have to do whatever is necessary to protect that.
I agree. I agree, because I'll also say, when I was down there with Mr. Corningay, and we were doing the walkthrough, then that's when I kind of got into with him a little bit about the eight acres, because at that time, they told me they were going to use it for semi-truck parking, and I said, are you serious? Here, we're trying to use it to maybe put in four soccer fields or flag football fields, and you want to use that property to park semi-trucks on? So we are, I definitely had a little disagreement with him at the, at the beginning of, with the walkthrough with Mr. Corningay, and, and also, if you don't mind, would, what we talked about this morning, and would you please explain, and, and I know, but, but to make it all public? Because I've been getting calls, you know, that we went in there and we cleaned out the offices and all that, will you please explain that, that it had to be cleaned out by the thirtieth, and that our county manager gave them every opportunity and let it go the whole month and waited until the last three days before we came in there, but if...
Yes, the Department of Agriculture's moving into that building.
Yes, sir.
Investigative people as well, uh, are moving into that building, they had to be out by the thirtieth. They gave it up on the eleventh, there was plenty of timeframe between then and the twenty-eighth, I believe it was, or twenty-seventh, whenever it was, we went there, because I had already contacted the county manager, because I, I get paid to be nosy, and I'd ride and I kept finding gates open, things unlocked. I said, boss man, we got to secure this property. I don't know who's coming in and out, but we, those files, the history, everything of the fair, we need, we don't want it being destroyed, plenty of time. So we went down there and we seized, and all the documents are right across the hallway that were seized. The equipment, they claimed, first it was told, that's my equipment by Mr. Woodruff. Then he made the comment, well, the, the fair paid me back for it, I said, okay, the fair, but we gave it to the friends of the fair. By my request, we, we got together, myself, Mr. Corningay, the county manager, said, we better secure this equipment, anything of value, we better secure, tell me who's got a key, until we get all the keys and locks changed, we got to secure this stuff. And I told him, secure it at the county road department. So that's where the equipment, the tractor, the commodity, very nice tractor, bush hog, a, uh, what do you call it, a better lawnmower than I can afford, a, uh...
Zero turn.
Zero turn.
Scag.
Scag, top line, that's Cadillac lawnmowers, was there in a golf cart. So anything we thought of real high value, we went ahead, did that, got the county, the city to come up and fix one of the light poles right away that's been crooked for years, and got it fixed up because it looked mishazardly. Trying to get things in order, secure everything, the documents were all secured, but it had to be done because they'd already got notice from agriculture, they couldn't have done it, there was so much stuff and history, it's all been property boxed and all down, it's in our custody. That's the good thing, so nothing can be destroyed or whatever, not that they would, not saying they would, but now we know it's not. So didn't want to take that risk, could have been somebody else getting in there, somebody that used to work there, changing all the locks, there's a lot of locks.
There was.
We worked with the church to make sure that they contacted Mr. Davis, David Tucker, and he got a hold of Son, and I told them, we're changing locks, we'll get with you, make sure you got the keys, and we want y'all to still have access to all those kind of things you got to change. There's a lot of changing over, that's the fair manager's responsibility, I'm just a law from the side of it, to get all that done, he's been on that every day, I can tell you, it's taken a, a big chunk of his time, I've wore him out, needing things and, and made four, five phone calls a day, it seems like, just in getting what we need and to get done, so we are moving, but it did have to be secured, the property secured except for the eight acres, and if they transferred any money, which we've got the documents now into that nonprofit, that's what we're looking at to move forward with the civil side and also move forward with, I'm hoping they'll just do the right thing. Those individuals are not dummies. They were smart enough to, to do what they did to us. I say to us, because I'm a community member, my kids and my grandkids, that's theirs, it's not somebody else decide what needs to be done with it. That was bought, Mr. Jim Crawford was there for an entire different purpose and became part of the fair association, and it says that fair property must be perpetuate, that big word again.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity, told you. It's used for public use, and when it's not for public use, it shall be returned to the city or county. Just wanted y'all to know that, in what direction we're headed in.
I think that all of us are shocked, I think we're sad, because we did this with the goodness in our heart to save the fair for, for the county and for our families, and like you said, our kids, our grandkids, and to take money that was generated at the fair, it just, it, it just doesn't make sense, and that, so I think that we're all deeply hurt by it, and, and like Miss Spooner said, and now we have a responsibility.
We do.
And we can't, we can't shun our responsibility.
Take the gloves off and let's go out at full force, I, I, I welcome the day in court to explain this, that's the reason I came publicly. That's the reason I came publicly. To state it, because I can't go to the store. I couldn't go to church without being confronted from somebody in the community, as you can see today. Sometimes we're not on the same side. It's not we're all on the same canvas today because it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, cracks like a duck. It's probably a damn duck. Thank y'all.
Sheriff, whatever you need, you've got our full support.
Absolutely.
Thank you. County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things I want to say on the record regarding the timeline and the actions that we took, um, from the county manager's office. The Friday before, I'm trying to recall the date. I guess it would've been the 25th, if the 25th was on a Friday, whatever, whatever date that was. We had a meeting with, uh, the clerk and the chief deputy clerk in my office and discussing, um, you know, our options going forward and the fact that the Fair Association's administrative offices had to be cleared out by the following Wednesday uh, because the, the agricultural department was taking over. We, after that meeting, uh, we made the decision to go in on Monday. I called and had a roll-off dumpster delivered to the property. I asked Amanda and Heather to go down there and, and, and the arduous task of, of cleaning out those administrative offices. Uh, we also had some inmate crews go down there and help out. Our Public Works folks, Rick Stevenson and, and his folks were very, very helpful. They're the ones that got all the locks changed out. But Amanda and Heather did the bulk of the work there, uh, boxing up all the documents and, and, um, even our IT guys got involved. They came down there and, and secured the computer. And now all that, all that documentation and all that computer system is, is sitting in the, in the office across the hall here. So as the sheriff said, we have custody of all that. But to the sheriff's point, we did, I did. I made the decision to wait as long as I could before we were forced to do something like that. I wanted the Fair Association to be a part of the transition. But when it became apparent, um, and by the way, I want to publicly thank the clerk's office for, for, because Rachel had called me and said, hey, let's talk about this. So we did. And, um, it was from that meeting that, once again, I made the decision to move quickly, get out, get down there Monday morning and get that place cleaned out. And they did it in two days, which is absolutely remarkable. So I just wanted to, to go on the record and say all that so there was no, uh, confusion about the timeline or about the intent. Um, we made a decision based upon what we thought was best for the citizens, the community, the taxpayers, and for our county government as well. So that's all I have to say about that. Um, give you an update going forward regarding the applications, uh, the Fair Association applications. The deadline is this coming Friday, the night, um, for all applications to be in. Um, I, I'm not sure how many we have now, probably eight or 10. Uh, but this is what I wanted to mention to you. Our, our next meeting, board meeting is next week, next Thursday. I want to, I want to go ahead and seat the, uh, or, or call together the review committee um, prior to that, so that we can bring our recommendations at the next board meeting. So you guys can go ahead and seat the other five persons for the fair board. I do not want to wait any longer than that. The reason I'm bringing this up is because there were recommendations from the board about additional persons to sit on the review committee. Well, the only time Amanda has put this together and the only time they can all come together is on a Friday. I do not want to wait until Friday, the day after the next board meeting. So what Amanda's gonna try to do is bring as many of them together as possible, along with our internal team, and go ahead and make the recommendations for the, um, for the board members so that you guys can approve them next Thursday. So I just wanna, I want, I want you to understand that and I hope you, I hope you will, uh, agree to that. So I, I think, I think it's serious enough. I think timing is of the essence. And if we can't get, I don't even remember how many review committee members were, were there for additional. So if we can get however many, however many we can get in here to participate with our internal review committee, um, I believe that's what we need to do.
That sounds good. Y'all okay?
If I could ask you, will we be able to see the applications?
You'll, yes ma'am. You're, you'll be the ones to make the, make the decision on who sits on the board.
Okay. So, I mean, but we'll see them all, correct?
Yes, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am.
And, and Mr. Cornigay, and you said your review, um, committee will meet when?
We don't know yet.
Okay. Whenever you can get them together.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Okay. But it would allow time for whomever chooses to apply by the 9th to, to do so and then have the committee to review.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the earliest that we could get together as a review committee would be next Monday. I don't think it will be Monday.
Okay.
Oh, it will. Amanda says it's probably gonna be Monday.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good. Yes.
Yeah. Let's see, what else? Oh, uh, the, uh, American Public Works Association Annual Conference was held last week in Orlando. And our Public Works Director, Jason Dodds, of course, was in attendance. And he, uh, made a excellent presentation on Tuesday afternoon to the group. And, uh, like I've mentioned before, he's something of a rock star when it comes to the road department and he's got a reputation around the state. So just wanted to commend him for his participation and his leadership down at the, uh, annual conference.
Thank you, Jason.
And, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Moving on to the last item, Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Spooner.
Yes, um, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I wanted to, um, thank the, um, Health Department Fire Rescue, uh, for their event, successful event on the 23rd. That was run, roll, or walk, um, event. It was very successful down at the Health Department. Um, Mr. Weeks and, um, Ayanna Patterson. Also would like to thank the, um, the, the group that participated in the prayer walk, uh, hosted by Alan Chapel. Um, we had good participation for that. And again, our, um, Fire Rescue and Sheriff Department helped participate in it as well. Also, we had a, uh, successful Shirley Anne Brown Livingston Scholarship Foundation Cancer Walk. Again, I would like to thank the, um, our Fire Rescue, Mr. Weeks, uh, Chief, um, Ben Carter was there, representative from the Sheriff Department, Alan Chapel, Annie Ock, Ebenezer, um, and many others. And Ayanna Patterson from the Health Department had a booth, uh, a table with information on breast cancer awareness. We raised nearly $4,000. We're a little short, shy of our $5,000. But if anyone else would like to make a contribution, you still can do so. But we will be offering five scholarships, um, to students that are going into the healthcare profession. Um, we had, um, a great May Day Festival on Saturday, this past Saturday, at the RJE, uh, site. Um, the kids actually planted the maple. Uh, had lots of activity and fun activities there. Uh, thanks for the coordination of the concerned citizen, Ms. Alicia McMillan, President. Um, and everyone had a great time. Also would like to, um, commend, um, Ms. Cynthia Ross for coordination of the National Day of Prayer held at the city square on May 1st. It started at 7:00 AM and went through 7:00 PM with, um, different churches, uh, providing prayers each hour of the day. Um, I, I wanted to just bring to the attention of the board, um, my concern and you all are probably concerned too, for, um, the continued loss of businesses in our community. And we need to be cognizant of this happening to see what, what, I don't know, what can be done. Uh, recent loss of the Davis Trucking Company. That was a company provided lots of, um, jobs for drivers. Uh, Fun Point, um, provided food, uh, and entertainment. Um, and then also, you know, we have the, the backcock furniture business that, um, was, was a loss. So as I'm looking at many of these businesses that are, are leaving or they're closing doors and we're looking at how we can improve from an economic standpoint, how do we bring businesses, but how do we retain them in our community? So if there's something that we can do to keep these businesses, um, because that brings in revenue for our community. Um, and the sheriff did his, um, presentation this morning regarding the, um, Fair Association and the swap of that eight acres. That was just extremely disappointing that, uh, of those actions that were taken. So I, I hope, um, that we can remedy that situation as soon as possible. Um, and I just thank everyone, uh, for your, you know, being supportive, being here and for our board and the, the actions of our, our county manager and the advice from our legal counsel. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, I know you tried to skip over the sheriff earlier in the agenda, but you...
I was messing with the sheriff.
You, you did manage to skip over the county attorney.
I did? Oh. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Now, um, I, I'll, just briefly. I think Commissioner Andrews said it best. This is sad. That being said, there is light at the end of the tunnel. By actions this commission has taken, uh, there will be a new board reconstituted. And the majority of the individuals on that board are gonna be appointed by this commission. And, uh, I was fortunate to, the sheriff was kind enough with, uh, Mr. Cornigay this morning to brief me on what he presented. And, uh, my comments, um, at the time and will be here publicly is, uh, that just move forward with haste what you're doing to get this board reconstituted so that they can be a functioning organization, right? Because ultimately, the long-term vision that you've set forth is to have a functioning Fair Association Board that's serving the interest of the, of the people of Bradford County. I would also say that, uh, to the extent some actions have been attempted to be taken, whether it be on the 7th of April or whenever, uh, by the individuals to move property around, uh, whether that property be in the form of the eight acres in a, in a quitclaim deed or whether it be cash, which I don't know that to be the case or not. But if any of these things have happened, I would highly recommend to wind that back immediately. Doesn't, I don't say that like any of those things that were done were properly done in the first place. What I am saying is clear up the title. Unwind whatever purported was to be attempted to be done in terms of moving property or cash around and do it immediately.
Well, we were putting, if I can speak for a minute? We were putting a precarious position. I think all of us were uncomfortable about it whenever we taking this thing over. We didn't know what would be taken out of the count or... I mean, it was a very precarious position. We did what we had to do to save the fair. I mean, you know, we knew we got the show barn, we got the exhibition buildings, we got the fairway. But, uh, this has been very stressful on me, to say the least. And actually, I've worried about it since last January, a year ago, when we first started talking about it. And, uh, I was just scared of it. They would go away and somebody'd buy it and we wouldn't be able to have a fair anymore, so...
Well, that's not gonna happen. You guys did it, you acted decisively and the band-aid's been ripped off. And sometimes when the band-aid gets ripped off, you gotta deal with a lot of triage and cleaning up. And that's the process that we're in right now. And then it's gonna heal up and it's gonna be better than ever.
Thank you. Thank you, clerk. And Rob Bradley, I didn't mean to skip over you. Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Commissioner's comment, Commissioner Andrews?
I'll save mine for the next one, but I would like to thank everybody for being here. And, um, Sheriff, thank you for your research. I mean, um, it's, it's gonna be tough, like, like Senator Bradley said, or, sorry Bradley. Um, it's gonna be tough. And, um, we know these people, they know us and, um, but in the end, it's just what has to happen. So thank you for that. And, um, I'm thankful that we have the fair. Um, I'm thankful that we, at least right now, have a part of it and, um, that we can put it to good use for, for our families. So thank you all for everything you did cleaning those buildings out. Amanda said it was a mess and, um, so thank y'all for doing that. And Denny, thanks for hanging in there. So, and, um, that's all that.
Um, I just want to thank everyone for being here today. Uh, Jason, thank you so much and, uh, wish I could've, you'll have to do that presentation for the board one day.
Yeah, Jason, do that.
That, that would be cool. I'd love to hear it myself. So, um, but thank you, Sheriff. I can't thank you enough. This is, again, like everybody said, this is gonna be a, a tough, hard task. Um, especially we were, we were friends with everybody, but whatever you have to do, Sheriff, we're behind you 100% and we really do appreciate it. And, uh, also, Mr. Cornigay, um, I can't thank you enough. Um, uh, if, if you go into Mr. Cornigay's office, he looks like he's stressed to the max. I know he's dealing with all kinds of things, probably like what the clerk was talking about, same exact thing. So I, I know a lot has been thrown on your plate and, uh, I really do appreciate the way you're handling it and keeping things going forward. And, um, and, uh, and our attorney, I, I thank you very much for all the sound advice you've been giving us in moving forward. So we really do appreciate it. So, and, um, we're running a little bit behind, as you can see. I guess we'll take maybe five, 10 minutes recess and then we'll start our, um, our fire assessment workshop. If that's okay with everyone. All righty. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I need it. All right. Board of County Commissioners, Bradford County, Florida, May 6th, uh, 2025. It's 11 o'clock. At this time, we're going to start our fire assessment workshop. And, uh, to get us started, I'm going to open us up with prayer and flag salute and then we'll start the meeting. Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, Father, we just thank you so much for this awesome day you've given each and every one of us, Father, another day of life. We just thank you and praise you for that. And Father, most important, we thank you and praise you that you even allowing us to come and pray directly to you. And Father, you've heard everything that's going on in our meetings in the past today. And, and Father, we have a lot of problems, a lot of issues. I just pray you'll have your hand upon every situation, dear Lord, and help us to do what's right and what's pleasing in your eyes. I pray, dear Lord, as we go into this meeting now for the fire assessment, I just pray you'll please be with Ben. I pray, dear Lord, this presentation will be clear. Everybody will understand exactly what needs to be done. And I just pray you'll give this board wisdom to do the right things and what's best for this county. Thank you for everything you do for us. Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on its own foundation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
All right. This time I'll turn it over to our fire chief.
All right. Good morning, board.
Morning.
It's always an honor to stand before you and this presentation will probably look familiar to you by now. So, uh, it's very similar to the ones that we've, uh, completed here in the past and happy to present it again to, uh, to the community and to you all. So I think it's important to start when we talk about the fire assessment and talk about the fire department, how we got here. So on August 20th of 2020, the sheriff brought his, uh, when the fire department was under the sheriff, um, he brought his budget proposal to the board. Um, at that meeting, there was consensus to bring back the fire department underneath the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners. At that meeting, the sheriff expressed funding concerns at that time. Said the men and women currently responding to the calls need to know whether or not the board is going to fund the fire department and what they can expect in the future. And that still rings true. So on September 8th of 2020, there was a special meeting called, which, uh, during that meeting, there was an approval of the, uh, fiscal year 2021 Fire Rescue Operations and Action Plan, uh, to create a fire rescue department, appoint Allen Parish as the director and approve a combined fire rescue budget, all of those things past 5-0. And at that meeting, uh, Ms. Roden was the county manager at the time, and she pointed out also that where they were funding concerns, um, you know, that they were going to use the unassigned, unassigned fund balance to fund the fire department for that year, but the board would need to look for a reliable, uh, continuous revenue source. So in that 2021 Fire Rescue Operations and Action Plan, there was one director, um, who's the chief, one fire division chief, uh, one EMS division chief, one operations captain, one training captain, two daily roaming lieutenants, five ambulances and three engines. This was the organizational chart that was approved in that operations plan during that meeting. On March 17th of 2022, that fifth ambulance that was approved in that plan was eliminated from service due to, uh, we had five vacancies in our department and six vacancies is one truck essentially. So, uh, there was a hiring freeze from the county at the time and it was the decision of the board to, uh, we could either staff that unit with overtime, we could hire personnel to fill that unit, or we could, uh, eliminate that unit. And the decision was made to eliminate that unit, that fifth unit from service. On June 6th of 2022, uh, almost three years ago now, which is crazy to think, uh, it was moved by Vice Chair Andrews and seconded by Commissioner Thompson to appoint me as the fire chief. That motion carried 5-0. And at that time, we restructured and we actually, uh, we changed up our operations plan a, a little bit, or I'm sorry, our, um, our, our command structure a little bit. We eliminated the one ambulance, um, that was done back in March of 22. We changed one chief's position, uh, we demoted that position down to a captain. We eliminated an administrative assistant position and we went from 60 FTEs down to 56. It was 53 at the time and then we were, uh, I'm sorry, 54 at the time. And then the board approved us to, uh, hire the three personnel for relief staffing, which we're still working on, uh, getting those personnel in the door. Uh, but we are again, working on that pretty diligently. So as you can see, you know, people, uh, claim that we're, we're, we're growing this thing and that it's just getting out of hand and that, um, you know, we're, we're building an empire and, and that's certainly not the case. As you can see, we've actually reduced since we started the department in 2020. So when we look at our response and talk about requirements, um, the NFPA, which, which governs all of our decisions and, and regulations and rules in the fire service, um, NFPA 1710 requirements, for a 2,000 square foot residential structure, their recommendation is 16 personnel on that fire. We can give you seven personnel based on our current staffing. For a strip mall, they also recommend, uh, 27 personnel on that fire. Again, we can give you seven based on our daily staffing. And first duty response time, they recommend that all units, uh, I'm sorry, that the first arriving unit be on scene within four minutes. And our average first arriving scene is on scene within nine minutes and 18 seconds. So as you can see, well below, um, the NFPA recommendations.
Today, a large fire at a Bradford County sawmill is now out. TV 20's Alyssa Perry joins us live from Lottie. And Alyssa, how long did it take firefighters to put the flames out?
It took more than five hours for the Bradford County Fire Rescue Teams to extinguish the fire at the Tatum Brothers Sawmill. Firefighters say they got the call around 3:30 this morning. Bradford County Fire Rescue was joined by crews from Clay County Fire Rescue. The family-owned business has multiple buildings on site, including a sawmill, two planter mills and a shop. District Fire Chief Dylan Rogers say crews have responded to the mill several times over the years. TV 20 was there in 2018 when a fire destroyed most of the business. We ask Rogers to compare the size of today's fire to the one in 2018.
About the same in comparison. Um, a fire like this takes a lot of resources, uh, manpower and, uh, just, just doing the best we can to, with the resources that we have to, to mitigate the situation.
The cause of the fire is still under investigation, but one of the owners tells TV 20 he thinks it was started by electric wiring. As we mentioned, this isn't the first time the Tatum family has seen their business burn. TV 20 Hawaizel was able to talk to one of the owners this morning about what they're going through and how they're feeling. Let's take a listen.
Look, these boys is like family. I went to school with half of them's daddy, you know what I mean? Some of them's daddy worked for my granddaddy. I went to school with them, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's a small community and they're more important to me than the shed is.
All Tatum can think about while watching his building burn for the second time is his employees.
Some of the boys has been working for me 35, 40 years, you know, and, and they'll be all right. Yeah, they'll, they'll, we'll keep them working.
He believes the material inside the sawmill makes it prone to fires.
All the debris, everything is wood. Uh, so it lays there, we try, we clean constantly and trying to clean up constantly to, to put the fire hazard down, but you never get away from it.
The owners tell me their family has been in this industry for generations and they take the good with the bad. With every fire, they just rebuild and hope for the best. In 2018, the sawmill was engulfed in a mechanical fire.
It's going to take a while to clean things up and then we'll have to start back the rebuilding process. Unfortunately, this is not the first time we've had to do this.
But Tatum remains positive.
Please, this won't set us back too bad. It's, it's a certainly a slap in the face, but, but you have to take the bad with the good.
Reporting in Lottie, Hawaizel, TV 20 News.
So why do I show that, right? It's, it's because that's a recent event that we just had where, yes, you know, a, a, a response from us looks different than it does in Clay County or Jacksonville or anything like that, but still on a sawmill fire, we're able to put seven personnel on that fire. Luckily, Clay County was able to respond. They brought about 20 personnel with them. Um, so we were able to mitigate that. We, uh, my, my entire administrative staff at 3:30 in the morning was headed out to the sawmill, uh, you know, on a, on a Monday, first thing Monday morning at 3:30 in the morning, we all got up, went out there, obviously to go, to go help. Um, it was an all hands on deck thing. As soon as Chief Rogers got there, he sent out a mass text to all of our employees saying, hey, if anybody's available off duty, please come help, um, because we just don't have the personnel to manage something like that by ourselves. Um, again, thankfully Clay County was able to, to respond and help us with that. You know, and, and along those lines, I think that it's, it's important to remember that we, we look at things based on facts. We, we started this department in 2020 based on research, based on data, based on regulations and guidelines that were set place, they were set in place many, many years ago. Um, and this department was founded on facts. People say that we're excessive. People say that we're, we're, you know, we've got too many personnel or there's too many chiefs and not enough Indians or whatever the case may be, but, um, those are opinions. We operate our department off of facts. People ask where have the volunteers gone? As many of you know, uh, volunteerism in general has declined, uh, in, in any organization you look at. You look at your, your civic organizations, the Rotary, Kiwanis, you look at churches, everything has declined over the years with volunteerism. For firefighters, uh, specifically, it's now 206 hours to become certified as a volunteer firefighter. So it's 206 hours of training that you have to go through in order to become certified and recognized as a volunteer firefighter, plus $1,000 just for the training, doesn't include the, the protective gear that you has to be purchased. We get questions about our, our vehicles that you see driving around. So our pickup trucks, uh, let's run through those real quick. My pickup truck, which is parked outside is a 2021 F-150. That was purchased through a state EMS matching grant. The upfitting was completed here in-house and so the only cost to the taxpayers for that vehicle was the match that was associated with that matching grant, which was around $7,600. The division chief, uh, Chief Rogers drives a 2023 F-150. We purchased that. We were able to get a few grants throughout the year, uh, where we had the match waived on those grants. So we used those matching funds that we had set aside for the grants, um, to purchase this, this vehicle here. The upfitted was completed in-house. We paid the, the price that you see there, $45,000 for that vehicle. Our operations captain, when the county IT department was dissolved, um, and transitioned over to Inspired, uh, they had a, a two-wheel drive vehicle, a two-wheel drive F-150. Um, as you know, two-wheel drive doesn't work for many places around here in Bradford County. Uh, no offense to the road department and that's, uh, certainly not a, not a hit on them at all. They do the best they can, but there's just a lot of places you can't access without four-wheel drive. He's gone. I was trying to make light of him, but, uh, so we traded that, that two-wheel drive in for a four-wheel drive vehicle. Um, they actually gave us more. They actually gave us more on the trade end than we originally paid for the vehicle, because that was at the time where there was a shortage of, of used vehicles. And so they actually gave us more on the trade end than, than, than what we purchased the. Or that what we originally purchased it for, and the original purchase for that vehicle is used, was purchased with CARES Act funding, so it was COVID, COVID funding was used. To purchase that vehicle originally. We outfitted the vehicle, put the top on it, things like that, less than ten thousand dollars to Bradford County taxpayers. Fire marshal drives a two thousand and eleven F one fifty that was handed down from the sheriff's office. Total cost to taxpayers was six hundred and fifty dollars for the wrap. Our training captain drives a two thousand and twenty four expedition that was purchased using the opioid abatement funds. No cost to Bradford County taxpayers, same for our community paramedic. EMS lieutenant drives a two thousand and nineteen F one fifty that was purchased using CARES Act funding, no, no cost to Bradford County taxpayers. And our fire lieutenant drives a two thousand and sixteen F five fifty. This was, the chassis of the vehicle was originally a brush truck, and we converted that onto. The box you see there, which is the squad body is what we call that squad box. Which was an old volunteer truck from Hillburn Springs Fire Rescue, and we actually used that from two thousand and six, we used that box. And put it on a newer brush truck body. It's worked out to be a great vehicle for us, and all of that was completed in house by our. Fleet, fleet management over at the road department, public works. People ask why do we need four door vehicles, we carry a lot of equipment, a lot of it takes up a lot of space, it's not small equipment by any means. And so every one of our supervisor vehicles is advanced life support capable, so we carry the same equipment. In my pickup truck that is on an ambulance, there's a few, few more things that they carry like IV pumps and ventilators and things like that. But drugs, innovation kits, all those things I carry on from my vehicle all the way down to, to, you know, the, our fire marshal. We've transferred a lot of vehicles out of our department, so when we, instead of. When our, our vehicles meet their useful life for our department, we've got to have reliable. Vehicles that are able to respond quickly and, and like I said reliably. When they meet their, the end of their useful life for us, we could put those vehicles on gov deals or some sort of auction website and sell those vehicles and get some sort of. Money back for those vehicles to be able to purchase newer vehicles. But we don't typically, we transfer those vehicles over to the road department, and here's just a short list of what you can see, we've transferred over to. Public Works since two thousand and twenty. Lot of questions about ISO, so let's talk about what, what ISO rating and kind of what that information entails, but. When a insurance company looks at insuring, insuring your home, they give you a public protection classification, one being. The best to ten is not recognized, no recognized protection. Our current rating here in Bradford County is a five, five X and ten, and I'll explain what that means here in just a second. So class five, if you, if you meet that rating, that means that you are five miles from a fire station and within one thousand feet from a fire hydrant. A class five X means that you are five miles from a station, but you have no fire hydrant within a thousand feet. And a class ten means you're further than, no, no station within five miles and no hydrant within a thousand feet, again, that's recognized as, as no fire protection. On there. Talking about. Our station locations and where we have things strategically placed, a lot of the, the locations that we have currently. Again, were, were put in place long before we ever thought about having a career fire department, and this was done, you know, by the volunteers, this was laid out on a map. And these stations were strategically placed throughout the county. Lottie up in, at the very top of the screen, LA fifty, that's our Lottie Station, Station fifty. Hillburn Springs is Station forty, Sampson City is ninety, Thressa is twenty, and Speedville is Station ten. And so these circles that you see, those are all. This pointer works here, it does indeed. These circles here are all five mile radius circles, so everyone that falls within one of those circles. Is getting that class five or five X, right, so if they're within, you know, a thousand feet of a hydrant, they're getting a five. And they're in, within that circle. If they're not within that thousand feet, they're at least getting a five X. So what that means is when we look at closing down stations. Those circles start to go away, and when the circles start to go away, that means the people that live in those circles that don't live in that circle anymore. Now their, their property protection class, their PPC goes to probably a level ten. Which drastically increase their rates if they're able to maintain coverage at all. So just to give you an idea of what that looks like. If you shut down, you know, the Thressa Station, that opens up a big area in between the Hampton and Thressa area. And Hampton, or I'm sorry, and Thressa and Stark. Same thing with Hillburn Springs, opens up a lot of area and a lot of residents out there. And then Station eighty that, that you saw there in Brooker is not an active station currently, that is one that we're, we're attempting to, to get put in place here in the near future. And so if that station were not to come into play, again, they would, they would remain at a, at a class ten, Brooker also has a lot to gain. In regards of us opening a station there because they have a hydrant system, so anybody within a thousand feet of that hydrant. Right now is probably not at a class five, but they would be at a class five when we open the doors of that fire station. But what does that look like in real world numbers, right, we've talked a lot about ISO and the different ratings, so I've obtained this quote, this is an actual quote from a local insurance agent. For a wood frame, four hundred thousand dollar dwelling with a thousand dollar deductible and a two percent hurricane deductible. If your property protection class is a five, your annual premium is six thousand, seven hundred ninety eight dollars and six cent. If that goes to a property class of ten, so if we close down one of those stations and one of those circles goes away. They go to an eight thousand, seven hundred forty five dollar and thirty eight cent annual premium. Or thousand, one thousand nine hundred forty seven dollars and thirty two cent or twenty eight percent, twenty eight point six percent increase. So let's talk about our annual call volumes, this is for calendar year two thousand and twenty four. We have one thousand, two hundred and twenty three calls that we classify as fire related, purely fire related. With a total of seven thousand, five hundred and thirty six incidents, which is average of twenty one per day. Our average response time, as I mentioned earlier, was nine minutes, eighteen seconds. Our average call duration is one hour and thirty two minutes. Our average scene time is nineteen minutes and forty seconds. And our average transport time is thirty two minutes and seven seconds, a lot of our transports, as you know, go to Gainesville hospitals. We had thirty two structure fires with one civilian fatality last year. Twenty two vehicle fires. Standby. Sixty three brush fires with a total of four hundred and twenty two acres burned. Two hundred and fifty nine motor vehicle collisions with a total of five hundred and ninety five patients out of those vehicle collisions. Seventy one trauma alerts. Seventy four cardiac arrests. We attempted, and cardiac arrest is, I've explained before, means that you're not breathing and you don't have a pulse. We attempted resuscitation on fifty seven of those cardiac arrests, and the ones that we don't attempt resuscitation. We, we deem that there's no viability with that patient, so they've been down for a long time without oxygen. You know, with not breathing, there's signs of, of definitive death. And those are the type ones that we don't attempt resuscitation on, so we attempted resuscitation on fifty seven. And we got pulses back on twenty nine out of those fifty seven. State average Ross grade is twenty four percent. And Bradford County Fire Rescue Ross grade is thirty nine percent. Now they count the Ross grade based on the total number, not the ones that resuscitation was attempted, so. It's twenty nine out of seventy four is what our Ross grade is based off of, my opinion, it should be based off the ones that we do attempt resuscitation, but that's not the way they do it, so. Our truck utilization, our Station ninety, which is Sampson City, was our busiest engine. They ran one thousand, one hundred and fifty four calls last year. And Medic six, our Stark ambulance, ran two thousand, one hundred and twenty two calls for service last year. Lottie is our second busiest engine and Thressa and Speedville are our slowest station in the southeast area. And that holds true for the ambulances as well. Alright, so let's talk about why we're actually here is understanding the actual fire assessment fee, so when we talk about. What is being charged? The only thing that's going to be charged is a dwelling unit for residential, so we'll talk, we'll get a little bit more into what that looks like. So this is what is considered a dwelling unit, this is a resident. The way you can find out how many dwelling units you have on your property is you go to the Bradford County Tax Collector's website, I'm sorry, Property Appraisers website. You go to record search slash GIS map. You type in your information, so you type in your, your name and you can search that, it'll bring you up to search page and then you just pull up your information from there. And then you'll see that there are, you know, this is kind of a confusing page here, but. At the top there, it says building characteristics and it says. Description, single family, so that means that that is the only dwelling unit that's on that property is under building characteristics. Okay, so that's the only thing on this property that will be charged is that one single family building characteristic. Same thing for mobile home, it's listed a little bit differently, but it's in the same place, so if you go to the Property Appraisers website, search again. You go to building characteristics, you can see it's MH eighteen, which just means it's a mobile home. You can see there, there's only one thing listed under building characteristics, so that is the only one dwelling unit that will be charged a residential fee. What if you have multiple dwellings on one parcel, so say you have some rental properties on one piece of property? So the red line here on this screen shows one parcel of property, and as you can see, there's, there's a few dwelling units or there's a few structures on that property. And so when we look, take a closer look at that. Again, we see that there's four dwelling units there on one piece of property. You may say, well, those are, you know, rundown places or whatnot, you know, that aren't inhabitable, but they're not, they're, they're nice places that these people rent out for, you know, for income. So again, all on one piece of property, these are, these are rental homes here. When you go back to the Property Appraisers website and you look under building characteristics, it shows you all four of those residents, so each one of those will be charged a residential fee. And please stop me if there's any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer. Talking about extra features and outbuildings, I know there's a lot of concern about if your shed's going to be charged. You know, or, or what's going to be charged in, in, in the assessment. Sheds and outbe, extra features and outbuildings are not, not assessed. So on this same piece of property. Where we had the four residents on the one parcel. This building that I just showed you a second ago is listed as a garage. So it's listed under extra features and outbuildings. And it is not going to be assessed, so this will not get a charge. You know, for the fire assessment. Same thing if you have a shed similar to this, three bay shed, this is not going to be assessed. Your chicken houses will not be assessed. Horse barns also not assessed, now if you have a, an apartment built into your horse barn. Has running water and electricity and you're, you know, using that for a mother in law suite or whatever the case may be, I wouldn't suggest putting your mother in law in the horse barn, but. You know, if that's your, if that's your option, then, but again, if you have, if you have that built out as an apartment or something of that nature. Then it would probably be assessed as, as a residential. Structure, and at that point, that's one of those things that we could adjust later if we deem that it's, if that's being charged or assessed inappropriately. Nice house here for sale in Bradford County. And this is. Multiple outbuildings as you see on this property, so let's just take a look at. What will be charged and not charged, so none of those outbuildings on this property, they're all listed as special, special features or extra features. On the Property Appraisers website. And they will not be assessed, so the only thing that's going to be assessed. As you can see here, it's got a lot of out, extra features and outbuildings described, so there's one single family residence. And then everything else is listed as an extra feature. So again, all the extra features on that property are not assessed, it's just the one single family residence. Correct. That's right. Let's talk about vacant parcels. And ag exemptions, we'll get there in just a second, so this is an eleven acre piece of property here, also in the county. One contiguous piece of property and it is, you know, if, if that were not deemed agricultural, eleven acres, that's would carry one vacant. Fee. Which is the only thing it would be assessed, is just one vacant, vacant parcel fee. Now if it's got, if it's listed as ag in the Property Appraisers website, it would be exempt. Ag is exempt from the fire assessment. So this is all the same owner, but this is broken up into two vacant parcels, so they have twenty acres on the west, twenty acres on the east, but it's all owned by the same person. So this person would pay two vacant parcel fees because it's broken up into, yes, it's connected, but it's broken up into two parcels, so that person would pay. Two separate vacant parcel fees. Unless they have ag exempt, and if they're ag, they are exempt from the fire assessment. Let's take a look at non residential or commercial. Again, building here in Stark. If you look in the Property Appraisers website, this is based off square footage, non, non residential is based off square footage, so under building characteristics. We go over to actual square footage, and so when you look at the actual square footage of that building, two thousand, nine hundred and one square feet. That is what their assessment would be based off of, and remember, it's a certain amount per square foot for non commercial. Any of the extra features and outbuildings and land is not assessed. Another commercial property here in town, a large area, big piece of property. And again, if you look at their building characteristics. Under that is the only thing that's going to be charged in the actual square footage, so ten thousand, eight hundred and forty five square foot. Is the only thing that's going to be charged, none of the extra features and outbuildings will be charged, none of the land will be charged on that property. Commercial gas station, Tony's, everybody knows Tony's. Again, the only thing that would be charged on this is the, under the building characteristics, it has one. Commercial building, and that's the only structure based on the actual square footage that would be charged, none of the extra features and outbuildings as you see there would be assessed. Crystal tractor just south of town, they have three. Buildings under the building characteristics, so they would be charged based on those three buildings. On the square footage of those three buildings, but everything as far as an extra feature and outbuilding, and as you can see, they have a lot of those on their property are not assessed. And let's talk about some exemptions that, under the board has considered. One would be churches, nonprofit or government owned buildings. One hundred percent disabled veterans would also be exempt. Anyone who's at or below the poverty threshold. And then again, as we explained earlier, anything zoned agricultural is going to be exempt. Just to give you an idea of the poverty threshold in two thousand and twenty five, for a single family, or I'm sorry, a single person. Their income has to be fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars annually or less to meet the poverty guideline threshold. For, for two people, it would be twenty one thousand, one hundred and fifty and so on and so forth. There is a grievance process, as I talked about earlier, if you believe you're being assessed inappropriately, if you have. Something that's listed as a dwelling unit on your property that is no longer being used as a dwelling unit. That's something that we can certainly come out and take a look at, we have a process for that, there's an email already set up, this telephone goes directly to our fire marshal. And so those are the, the ways that we're able to, to take a look at those and we can assess the, or address those on an individual case by case basis. And we're able to remove those things from the fire assessment if that is the case, so again, if you. Have two dwelling units on your property, but one of those dwelling units is being used for storage, there's no, no power to that building, there's no running water to that building. It's just being used as storage, again, we can, we can get those things off your assessment. So let's talk about rates, and when we look at rates, under the board has expressed interest in the fifty, fifty percent cost recovery rate, that puts the residential rate at one hundred and sixty seven dollars per dwelling unit. Non residential at eleven cent per square foot and vacant parcels at forty seven dollars per parcel. We look at that on a monthly basis, that's thirteen dollars and ninety two cent per month. Or quarterly would be forty one dollars and seventy, seventy five cent per quarter. And I've used this example before, but it's basically a double quarter pounder with cheese from McDonald's. One, once a month that you're giving up in order to pay for the fire assessment. Or I'm going to take a poll in here, how many, how many of us go out to eat? At least four times in one month, whether it be a drive through, whether it be sit down restaurant, how many of us go out? at least four times in one month? Whether it be a drive-through, whether it be sit-down restaurant, how many of us go out to eat more than four times in a month? I definitely do. So if you get a soft drink or a tea at those restaurants, if four times a month you take and swap that for water, you just paid for your fire assessment. Average drink at a restaurant's three dollars and twenty-five cent. There's also a lot of other habits that people have that, uh, that could be given up, right? I think that maybe not given up, but at least cut back on in order to pay, to pay for thirteen dollars and ninety-two cent per month. I think it's about decisions. It's about what is your priority? Do you want a professional response? Or do you want a scratch-off ticket for the month? These are real life examples. This is the Tatum Sawmill Fire right here. This is something that we just went to, we just mitigated. And why do I even put that up there and show these videos is because do you want, do you want those scratch-offs or do you want a firefighter that's going to come run to a call to a burning building and run into that? That's what you get. That's what you're getting with Bradford County Fire Rescue and what the response that we've established, what this board created in twenty twenty, we've built on that. We've done, not numbers, but we've built on that in quality. And I think that we've set a standard for this community that they've come to expect and that this community deserves for what kind of response they get.
I'm on a bike path that runs parallel to Southeast County Road eighteen and you can see some of the damage from the fire. Some areas are still smoking this evening. A man who lives on the other side of this bike path tells me he is grateful. The fire did not jump over the path last night and hit his property.
You couldn't see down the road. There was so much smoke just that quick.
A tense evening for Harry Kyle and his family as they watched the flames and smoke spread in front of their property.
Well, scared to death it would, uh, cross over and come onto the property.
The fire started along the Palaca to Lake Butler State Trail, which runs right in front of Kyle's property. The Bradford County Fire Department got the first call around three Wednesday afternoon. Three separate brush fires had started along one mile of the trail. Bradford County Fire Chief Ben Carter says at one point the fire jumped over County Road eighteen.
There's a lot of smoke covering County Road eighteen, so a lot of traffic danger. Uh, we shut down tra, uh, traffic on County Road eighteen for a, a period of time, probably about two hours.
Investigators are now working to determine if the fires were set intentionally. Wednesday's windy conditions also played a factor.
Yeah, the wind was, was, uh, you know, fifteen, twenty miles an hour at least. Anytime that you have a fire, you've got dry conditions and you get wind like that, you know, it's, it's able to spread very quickly.
Chief Carter says, this is a good reminder to pay attention to the weather if you are going to burn something or use anything that involves flames. With the flames now gone and fire crews cleared out, Kyle is breathing a sigh of relief that his property remained untouched and his family is okay.
Really thank goodness for the Bradford County Fire Department. They really jumped on it and really attacked it.
And I, I show you those videos, not to sensationalize this thing, but I think it's important that you see, people do expect when they call nine-one-one, they get a professional response. And I, I think we've, we have definitely, uh, met that calling and, uh, I'm very confident, I've said this before, I'm confident in our budget, I'm confident in our operation. Most of all, I'm confident in the men and women who respond to those calls every day. I'll open that up for any questions that you may have.
If I may. One question, um, on the I S O. Is that with every insurance department?
It is not. No, ma'am. That's a great question. There are some, uh, insurance companies that don't take I S O into consideration. Right? Um, that don't take I S O into consideration. So that's not for every, every property. I would say, and, and talking with, again, the, the insurance agent that I got this quote from, most insurance companies do take I S O at least into consideration. Um, now they may not use that as a a hundred percent determining factor, but typically, uh, they do take it into consideration. But yes, as Mr. Melvin pointed out, State Farm is one that does not.
It might be just a good tip for, for individuals to know what insurance companies do.
Sure.
Recognize it. And that way, if it, because it, if it's that substantial, it might be worth them changing insurance companies. But, um, if we could just get on the list of the ones who do recognize it, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, cause also they could call their own insurance company and, and find out. And if they didn't, I mean, shop it around.
Yeah.
Cause ins- insurance is, has gotten out of control. Probably everybody in this room knows that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. So.
Well, and many insurance rates went up, you know, over the past couple of years as, as, like, as you just pointed out, you know, people's insurance has gone through the roof. But again, that's with, with a professional fire department with a I S O rating of five or five X and, and for the ones that do recognize it, mine recognizes it, for instance, you know, but it did, it did increase this last year. The rate went up, but I could only imagine if one of those stations were to close and I were to go to a ten, what it would have gone up if they would have even kept me in coverage.
Yes, I agree. Cause mine, mine came down, but it's gone back up past where it was. But yes, it did come down. Oh, but yes, sir. If you would, for the public comments, please come up to the mic. Only reason I say that is because if you don't, the people listening, yeah, on YouTube or whatever cannot hear.
No, I just wanted to ask if the assessment rates that you cited include bringing in a station in Brooker. And if a station is brought in, what's involved with that? What kind of personnel and, and equipment?
So yes, our goal is to, uh, add, add a station in Brooker. Um, we have fifty percent of the funding that was requested was, uh, given to us through estate appropriations. And so our goal is to put two personnel with, uh, it would be what we call an adaptive response station. So we would have an ambulance there, we would have a fire engine there, we'd have a brush truck there. So depending on what type of call, if somebody's having a heart attack, they jump in the ambulance and they take that truck. If it's a brush fire, they jump in the brush truck, take that call or take that vehicle. If it's an, uh, a, a structure fire, they're going to jump in the engine and take that truck. So again, we call that a, an adaptive response station. And that's what that, that station would look like. We would have two personnel there per day. And that does include, um, the hundred and sixty-seven dollars does include the assumption that Brooker would participate in the assessment. So, um, that does again, include staffing for the town of Brooker. So, uh, just to touch on that a little bit, we did get some unfortunate news that the second half of the appropriation funding is not going to be awarded this, this go-around. Uh, we fought and fought for that appropriation. That was the top priority for us was to get that, that funding pushed through for the town of Brooker. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Corner Gay drove to Tallahassee as soon as he got the news and tried to fight for it even harder up there in Tallahassee. We've been on the phone trying to get a, a way that we have, you know, we've got the funding right now, five hundred thousand dollars for the station currently. We have about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand left over from the equipment. So when we wrote it last year, we wrote for the equipment, which would be the fire engine as well as the station. And so what we wanted to do was combine the station funding with the leftover equipment funding. So we would have six fifty, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand somewhere in that neighborhood, rough numbers here. Um, in order to, to go ahead and start building that station, we scaled it way back. We talked with our contractor. He said, absolutely, we could probably make that happen. But unfortunately, we got met with a no in Tallahassee from that also. So we're basically on the, uh, you know, they say that's going to be the top priority when they go back in session. And Mr. Corner Gay, you may be able to speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah. So I think it's important to note that next session begins early. So they'll actually be in session again in the fall. So it'll only be a few months, I hope, before we get good news and, uh, are able to secure the remainder of the funding and not have to wait until this time next year.
Right. And we, we did, uh, again, we, we just got notice of that official no late last week. And it's, uh, it was, it was definitely a punch in the gut for sure. So. But I, I will say, let, you know, the legislature has been good to us. The appropriations have been good to us. We've got that, that station in, you know, in, in the half of, first half of the funding already. I think we're going to, I was going to get with Mr. Melvin here soon and, and start that process of engaging a contractor. And that way they see that there is progress on that station that we're moving forward with it and that we're, we're in the process. Yes, ma'am.
If I may. I was going to save this for the end, but I'll go ahead and, and dive into it. Um, we were given five hundred thousand dollars for that building. Um, when I called Mr. Brandon, who I respect greatly, um, he is a, a very good man. He is, he has been good to Bradford County. And, um, I was somewhat embarrassed. I was somewhat, um, I was upset, um, because his, his emphasis was that we didn't get it because we didn't do anything with the money that we had. So my desire is that we start as soon as possible with the five hundred thousand dollars that we have to make sure that they understand that we're serious about building this fire station. Since I came on, I have asked for this and it is extremely important to me. And I know just from the meetings that we've already had, that we are very, very busy. We have lots of things that we're taking, that we're doing and, and that it's our responsibility to move it forward. But when we're talking about life and safety, when we're talking about people's lives and their property, to me, there's not a whole lot more, more important than that. I was going to address the board because each one of us, we have to support each other in, in things. Every one of us has projects and things that need to be done in their districts. Each one of us have to support each other in making that happen. Ms. Spooner asked for one mile of road to be paved for years. And I made the comment, please, can we just do this? I mean, we support what's important for our districts and for our people and for Bradford County. This is very, very important. And I'm asking the board to support me in my efforts to go ahead and let's move forward and get started on this building. I would like to see a foundation. I would like to see walls put up by time they go back in session. I want him to know that I, I can't imagine what he thinks of me not pushing this harder. And part of it, I mean, maybe it is my fault. Rumors now you can't build half of a fire station. But guess what? We did one time, didn't we, Mr. Riddick? And how many years did it sit there?
Lot.
A lot. Ten?
Wasn't ten. I, 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 you caught me on floor, but I, it's sitting there a while.
It's that there a long time. Didn't have a sprinkler system, so we couldn't use it. We can start Brooker Fire Station. I talked to a man that we've talked to about doing the job. He said, Ms. Andrews, I could start tomorrow. All I need is the word. And so, board, I'm asking you to support me on this. And before we start another project, please, can we get this off the ground and move forward with it?
And, and that, my, that was the only reason that we didn't get started on it is I didn't want to run into a situation like the Fairgrounds to where we got half of it built and then the other half of the funding never came along. And they took out a loan and then couldn't pay back that loan with, with the appropriations. So I didn't want to run into a situation like that. I, I feel like that definitely has to be a board decision. If that's the direction we want to go, I would, trust me, and you know that I've been a champion for that fire station, that I've fought for that fire station. And nobody wants more, you know, protection out there more than maybe you do. I don't know, but.
Yeah, probably.
But, uh, I mean, that's something that's, that's again, near and dear to my heart and I fought for that fire station. But I, I didn't feel like it was responsible on my part to say, let's go ahead and move forward with it without having the other, other half of that funding secured. Because what happens, you know, the what ifs, I mean, what does happen if that doesn't come to fruition and we don't get the other half of that funding? I didn't want to be the one responsible for saying, let's go ahead and move forward with it. Uh, certainly I'm going to do whatever this board wants me to do. And so if that's the decision, I'll, I'll charge ahead.
And Mr. Chairman, I would say that I, I agree completely with the fire chief. So what we would like to do, if, if you want to move forward with this, our next board meeting, as I mentioned earlier, is next week. So if we want to, we can put an agenda item on next week's agenda. And if the board votes in favor of starting construction without funding, without fifty percent of the funding, then that's exactly what we'll do.
Well, and based on Mr. Brandon's words to me, I feel completely opposite. I, I feel like he is waiting for us to do what we should have already done. And then he will do what he, I trust the man. I trust Senator Bradley. I think that, um, and I know that it's not just up to them. I understand that. But it, I believe that the appropriations will come if we are good stores and do what we should do.
And I agree with you. They've been great to us and certainly I, I trust them as well. I think that, you know, things that are out of their control, out of our control, God forbid another pandemic hit and same thing that happened with the Fairgrounds happen again. I'm not, I'm not fighting you on this. I'm not trying to push back at all. I'm just making sure that we look at it from every, from every angle for sure and do what's.
And Chief, um, and I, I mentioned this, I believe to you and Mr. Cornigay, you know, at Speedville, we did it just the opposite. We built the, um, the garage to put the trucks in first, and then we came back and built the living quarters.
Right.
But I, now I haven't seen the, the complete set of plans of what you're going to put in Brooker. But is there any way we could build the living quarters first? And then, in other words, is it going to be two separate buildings where you have living quarters and then the breezeway and then?
Yep. It's going to be designed very similar to Station Ten, just a scaled down version of that.
So with that in mind, then we could definitely go ahead and build the living quarters with the money we have and have that complete with five hundred thousand. That would be complete. And then if we, worst case, we didn't get the funding. We put up a pole barn or whatever to park the truck under. Now I know it will not make the I S O rating go down because the trucks have to be in an enclosed building, but at the same time, you've got firefighters there that are, can respond and you do have the trucks protected.
Yep.
And that way we can move forward. That's.
Yes, sir.
Well, and the other piece of that is adding the personnel. We've got, we've got to add six more personnel if that's the case.
But that was built in.
It is. Funny, but it was not built into my, my budget for next year because of construction times and, um, lead times on everything else. So we did not put that into our budget proposal for this coming fiscal year. It was going to be the following fiscal year. What's that? I'm sorry?
Going to the town of Brooker.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't think the people out there are going to respect building a housing for firefighters and then letting this truck here sit outside. They gotta be the proper way, um, handled.
No, he was talking about building a shelter for.
You'd have to build like a, you know, you can get one of them pole barns with the metal roof to park the truck under. I'm just saying, we only have five hundred thousand. You can't do the complete project. Now, if you want to build the, see, if you built the storage for the truck, then there's no living quarters. So then you'd have to do what we did in Speedville and they'd only be able to respond from eight o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night. Then the firefighters would have to go to another place to spend the night. Whereas if you did the living quarters first, you'd have the firefighters there twenty-four seven and then park the truck inside, you know, protective, um, pole barn or something like that. But, but at least you would have a complete setup ready to go.
And I think it's important to remember too, that that truck's a two-year lead time. So we're still, you know, a year and a half out from that truck being complete. Hopefully by that time we would have the additional funding to be able to build the full, the full project.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted, uh, Commissioner Andrews to know that the, uh, what I have, uh, and I believe the board has supported the efforts to have a sample city because it's the farthest, um, community that we have and we definitely do need that. So I don't want you to feel that there's a lack of support for it. I do know that the legislators do look at what you do if they provide funding. What have you done with it? So that question may arrive, but I also think that, um, they also understand if you don't have the full amount of money, you can't complete the project. But I certainly, you know, would, uh, be in support of utilizing it if, if you are able to do a structure for that sum of money. I have no objections to that.
Like Mr. Riddick did say, we wouldn't be able to build the building. Um, we wouldn't be able to build the base yet, but we could get that structure up. Um, it won't be the size of.
No, we've already scaled it way back. We already scaled that way back from.
But, but Brooker doesn't need it that size. We're only going to have two staff on duty. So, um, but I just, I just feel like we should do something to show them, um, that we're serious and that we appreciate what they've done. Um, and I spoke to some people in, even in the city, they had a, they had been given some money and they almost lost their project because they didn't do anything on CityWalk. Almost lo, lost their money because they didn't do anything with it that year. And here we sit in the same situation and I just think that we need, we need to act upon it.
So maybe it could be done as a phase one, phase two project.
Exactly.
Being one piece and phase two being the second.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, I'm just wanting you to know there's not any objection or lack of support or that it's your fault. It's not. You know?
Well.
Yeah.
Well, then let's go ahead and put it on the agenda for the fifteenth. Good with everybody?
I would also ask if we're, if we're going to move that direction, that, that we also approve me hiring six additional personnel. Needs to be included.
I actually thought we already did that.
No, ma'am. We had the three for the relief staffing to help with overtime.
So that's, that, I think that's what you're thinking about, Ms. Andrews. But when we checked with our clerk the last time in terms of whether we could afford, looking at reducing our overtimes, that we could hire more staff and that would even things out. So I think that's the, the people that you were thinking about.
Right. That was for the relief staffing to help offset some of the overtime costs.
Well, it's not, and it's not what I was thinking about because I was told that it was going to be built into it. So that, I mean, not by you, but I was told that it would be built into the budget. So that's, and I thought it was, already was.
No, ma'am. That, my next year's, my next fiscal year proposal does not include the staffing for the town of Brooker. But it can. I just need.
But we can work that out. Okay. Sounds good. And you got a question?
I do want to appreciate, uh, express appreciation to St. Diane Andrews for, you know, going to Congressman, Congressman Brad. Things are getting more expensive, right? We all see that. So we're talking about trying to build as much of a building as we can with $500,000. We know that that's doable for sure. Beyond shadow of a doubt, we can drop a building that we need to drop for $500,000. We got that in writing.
For living quarters? Yes, we're doing one now.
It is doable. Plus the six folks you're talking about hiring.
So that's a problem. So we can't do a building and six people for $500,000. So that's something we.
Well, it's going to take a little while, ma'am, to be able to build the building. So when we put it into the budget next year, then that'll be done.
But we're talking about building a building. Like, does this timeframe work 100%? I'm, I'm very hesitant to be in support of building a building when we don't know for sure. I mean, I'm, he's, he seems like a, a fellow that's been trustworthy to this point, but we don't know for sure that that's coming. So that's just something I want to express. I'm not confident that that's definitely going to come. And I was always taught that you don't do things without something in the hand.
If I can, the appropriation was not for personnel. It was only for the building itself.
Right.
Personnel side of that has to count from the county. And part of that is being offset by the fire assessment fee.
So is that something we're going to have to jack up the fire assessment fee to get more people?
In the proposed fire assessment fee amount.
So we're, and that right now has been set at about 50% ish, we're thinking.
It's not set.
Not set. So it could be, that could be something that y'all consider increasing to offset another six individuals. Because those folks do hard work. I rode rescue for a while before I moved to Florida. That's hard, hard work. That's hard work. Get that. So that's something that I wanted to express some concern about. I live in Brooker. I'm a town council with Mayor Melvin. My other question to propose out to everyone was, um, for the exemptions for our individuals that don't have access to internet or, um, you know, how, how do they go about applying? What's the plan for the individuals who need to apply for exemption but don't have an ability to do that easily? How are we getting that information out to those people?
Perfect. Thank you.
So, great question. And we'll be advertising those, that exemption process and, um, you know, the, the grievance process or whatnot. But those exemptions are done. It's the same form for, uh, indigent, uh, persons who can't afford a funeral. We have that, that process to where they can request a cremation, um, through our county. And so it would be that same process. We would, you know, advertise in the telegraph. We advertise in, in whatever, uh, capability we can. And if, you know, if there's an individual that someone refers to us, then we'll go out there and talk with them and walk them through that process. But the goal is certainly to help those individuals that certainly that can't afford it. The goal is to make sure that we're taking care of those people.
The town councils get that information. A lot of folks, you know, unfortunately don't get the telegraphs great.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, question. Just one other short question. What is the current response time to Brooker?
Yeah, it's not nine minutes.
It is not nine minutes.
It is not nine minutes.
That's probably why our response time is so high. So if we will F from right here and as hard as we could go, lights and sirens, 26 minutes to the town of Brooker. From Sampson City, which is where our closest response is, and again, it's an ALS unit that we have out of, out of Sampson City. It's still about 12 to 14 minutes, uh, from Sampson City, which is a long time to wait for somebody to come help you.
You got a family member on the floor having a heart attack and you're waiting 26 minutes for an ambulance to get there. If you can't see the need, I, there's nothing I can do that would help you to see it better. That's a long time, isn't it, Mr. Hardy? It's a long time.
And see.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's why I think we'd be better off if we could get the living quarters, then we could get something going like now. You know, even if we did have to carports now or whatever to park the truck under, you'd at least, you'd at least be able to, to staff it. You know, it'd just be the opposite of what we did in Speedville.
Right.
Okay. Yes, you had a.
The only thing I was going to say in regards to the RV park, um, you didn't, I know last time you mentioned it about the assessment fees for them. And then the second thing is I see this in Keystone. I live in Keystone as a resident. Our medical calls have been tripling and doubling. So we're asking for, you know, rides coming from Stark or Middleburg, um, long ways down. So when you think of the fire assessment, you're, yeah, we have to think about the future of it. How many medical calls you're going to be getting down the road? So as our population keeps expanding and our commercial spaces keep growing, because you've got like Race Track coming in and all these businesses. I said, so is the demand of people. And we're getting so much people coming down here that they want to be part of Florida. So people think short-term about the cost of it, but long-term, it's going to financially eventually break out because we're going to need to have six. You have to have a minimum of certain amount of firefighters and paramedics because medical costs are going to go up. Not so much fires, but that was what my main concern is, is more the long-term cost of it. So for the residents.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Melvin.
Board of County Commissioners, I'm Mayor Gene Melvin from Brooker. That's the saddest information that I could have possibly got for the town of Brooker this morning. The plan didn't fail. It looks to me like we have failed to plan. I feel like it's negligence on our part and I have preached this from the get-go when we first talked about the fire department in Brooker. Get something started. And Ms. Andrews, I've mentioned that to you many, many times and, and you have refreshed my memory, said, yes, you have. This thing should have got off the ground. We had $500,000. We should have already had a foundation or some kind of a structure out there. Things that we've had to go through with the town of Brooker, the questions that we have to ask every meeting. I was with a lady yesterday that's, that's unable to pay $167 a month. I know her personally. And she, she had several questions for me yesterday. She was thinking that the town of Brooker is the one that's putting this $167 or 50% on the people. We're not. If the rec, we, we meet, I think, week after next or next week. I don't think at this time here that we can possibly sign a resolution for $167 at this time. I don't know what the timeframe's going to be, but I personally, I can't speak for the rest of the board. But I can say at this time, I don't feel like the board's going to approve, uh, 50% or $167. I feel like they're more settled in the $94, especially now that we're not getting the fire station for, if we get the money. Who's to say in October, we're going to get money? November to finish this station out. People aren't satisfied knowing that, that this thing is, uh, if they pay this assessment, that, uh, we're going to have a fire department. At this time, I don't know. Next question, she said, if the people of Bradford, if this was put on a referendum, Mr. Melvin, do you think that this thing would pass? Absolutely not. Not, not at 50%. The $94, they would, they would go along with. I, I, my personal opinion on, about it. But this is the situation that we're in out here at Brooker here. And like I, I mentioned the last time to the board, there, these fixed incomes, these people cannot help that. They can't call the governor or the county or anybody else, say, look, I need another $167, uh, to get me by. They, they don't have the, they don't have the function or the ways and means to do this. I still think that the Board of County Commissioners should look at this 25%. If we need to increase it from time to time, so be it. We, we have to do more with less. I have to do more with less. I worked with Enron Corporation for 28 years. When they said they were shutting the plant down, well, forget, well, what about the 28 years that I served and I worked there? They didn't care. And the same thing with these people out there. They appreciate the fire department. We love the fire department and you guys do a tremendous job. And we appreciate you driving 26 minutes to get out there to Brooker to a fire. And, uh, the only question I have, when you come out there, most of the time they come out there, they're not dressed in their uniform to, to put the fire out. I witnessed that in Brooker on a house fire. But anyway, think about this, when we vote on the 50% or the 25%. And for as, I am very upset with our legislative bodies. I, so I shouldn't say that. I'm upset because we haven't already put something in place out there so that the people of western Bradford County at least can know where their money's going to be spent on special fire, fire assessment. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just, um, to address, um, Mayor, Mayor Melvin's, um, comments. I know that at our last meeting, you expressed, um, the Brookers, basically the residence inability, you felt to, to pay the 50%. But also I was under impression that your board would be meeting to make a decision. And I know that our timeframe has been extended so that the municipalities will have a chance to meet with their various boards, um, to make your decision. This board and, you know, while I'm cognizant of the many residents and their financial burden that, that many people experience, but a decision has not been made by this board yet on the amount that's going to be imposed. It's been recommended, but we haven't made a final decision.
I'd also like to just address the, the comment about not being dressed when they get there. And that's, that's probably factual. I'm, I'm not, I'm not denying that at all. Because of the fact that's a result of us having two personnel on an engine, right? The person that's driving the engine can't be fully bunkered out in all their gear and everything while they're trying to drop a truck 70 miles an hour down a, a narrow road. Same thing with the person sitting in the passenger seat is getting dressed on the way out to that call, but they're having to navigate. They're having to run the computer. They're having to run the sirens, the radios, those type things. So, um, that's probably very factual and that's, that's a result of having two personnel on an engine, but that's, that's reality.
Yeah, Mr. Stil.
Paul Stil, 14167 Southwest 101st Avenue, Stark. Uh, two comments. If you need some money to go to the Brooker Fire Station, I would suggest that you, if it's possible to move this money from the Cypress Run Boat Ramp Engineering Pot over to Brooker. It's far more important to get the Brooker Station there than the Cypress Run. And I think that what I see going forward, what the engineer is trying to get permitted is, is not going to work. And so you're just wasting your money proceeding with that Cypress Run, uh, the money that, any money you're putting into the Cypress Run. The other thing I wanted to point out, I thought that the county owned that, uh, the building, that used to hold a welding shop. It's sort of a Quonset hut sort of building. And because the guy that was living there, I think the county kicked him out.
He's been sold.
Yeah, we sold that property. The county sold that property.
Oh, okay.
If I could say something real fast, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't have a vote in this thing, but I'm just, I, I just want to emphasize again, before hiring more personnel, that you make sure you have this assessment passed at what amount you need it passed at before you go furthering any hiring. Because we ran decently in the black last year just because CDs were drawing over 5%. The only reason, only reason. We'd have been in the red if we'd still been in bonds. So just don't make a whimsical decision. Please. I mean, make sure the assessment is passed and enough to cover it before we add more personnel.
I, I agree with you 100% and, and I.
I second that as well.
I'll be honest, I, with everybody here, I, I think if we go less than 50%, it, we're, it's just not going to work. It's not going to work. Um, you know, we, I, I feel like we have to go with the 50%. I'm only one vote, but I'm just throwing it out there. That's, that's exactly where I'm at. And, and the other thing is, I'm going to be straight up and honest and this is going to make, I hope it doesn't make you mad because we've been friends a long time, but I hope Brooker opts in. Because we're, you will have a fire station there and it has been taking us some time. But it's going to be awful hard to staff that if Brooker doesn't opt in. You, you see what I'm saying? Well, I'm just saying, how, how could I vote to staff it if y'all won't opt in to, um, to help pay the assessment? You, you see what I'm saying? I mean, we have to represent all the people and I'm not trying to be mean or harsh. I know there's people with hardships that won't be able to pay. Ben has opened it up. There's a telephone number they can call, you know, to, to, to take care of it and help them. But I'm just saying, I'm only one vote, but for me, it would be very hard for me to vote to staff a station where they're not participating in the fire assessment. It, it would, because that's, that's not right for the, what, 26,000 residents in Bradford County? And, uh, and again, if we low, go lower than 50%, we're, we're going to go broke. I mean.
I, I think it's important too to remember that the fire assessment is helping to pay for that staffing. And so if, to, if we're increasing staffing to put in the town of Brooker, it only makes sense that the town of Brooker, who's benefiting from that staffing, would help contribute to that staffing. That's, that's the point you're trying to make.
Right, exactly. I'm, and I'm just trying to be upfront and totally honest with you, totally honest of, of what I'm thinking and the way I feel. And I, and please, I'm not, somebody that can't afford it, they just can't afford it. And, and we'll deal with it with the hardship and, and get them where they, they don't have to pay it. But, um, but especially, you know, the town of Brooker going from, y'all will be going from a, what, what was it? 26-minute response call to having a station right there, you know? And, and that's why I think, and I've been pushing this for a while. That's why I think it's so important to build the living quarters. And even if you have to park the truck under some type of shelter to protect it, you won't be under the ISO rating because again, that truck has to be in an enclosed building. But at least it would get the protection there now and get something started.
If you got, if you got somebody that's not breathing, I don't think they care about the ISO.
They don't care where to, yeah.
They care about somebody showing up.
Exactly.
How many's in, in the town of Brooker?
Theresa.
What's the timeframe we're thinking about on this, uh, fire station with people? We're at least two years out, right? We were, you were on the budget.
No, I mean, our budget has not been approved. It hasn't. So, I mean, we're still in, in, uh, budget talks right now. But I agree with the clerk that, you know, the fire assessment needs to be decided on before we add anything, uh, any personnel. So that would take, you know, the time of the fire assessment, but I could certainly build a budget with the anticipation that that passes and with those personnel on staff. Two years for the truck. We have apparatus we could put out there now. Getting this one up pretty quick.
Yeah, we're building that one right here in Sampson City right now.
About six months.
Yeah.
We don't know if we're going to have staff in the four buildings.
And that's a great point. And this is why, again, I, I didn't feel comfortable moving forward with anything until we had all of the funding secured, um, you know, for that building. But I'm, I'm 100%. Yep.
But we need to know that Brookers on board with the assessments. We can bring people in to be in the building.
Right.
So the Brookers timeline of the assessment.
Yeah. Yeah. We need to make sure y'all are on board before we keep.
We were hoping that, uh, we would get final results on this, these money, uh, appropriation by June. But what I've gathered today from Ms. Andrews is that these funds are not available for June. We in open prayer for what? October, November?
The first $500,000 we have available to spend right now. Right. I think, I think the point is that we're going to build a station and we're going to put people there. Again, with the commitment of, of the town of Brooker. I mean, I think that's, but that can happen. We can start that right now because we have the, we have the money for the building currently that will build the living quarters. And if we need to put a metal, you know, metal shed out there, we can do that, um, you know, for the time being, for, for a truck. So. that will build the living quarters, and if we need to put a metal, you know, metal shed out there, we can do that, um, you know, for the time be, for, for a truck, so.
Appropriations and all the construction, it's not helping with any personnel.
That's right.
That's right. I've been in this like half, forty-seven years, Black City, I've seen it all.
That's right, and they thought the first half was great, and it looked like they wanted to be in the living room. Hopefully that second half comes, but if it doesn't, you'll get a pull bar and children.
Wish I could move my arm over to the underneath farm, cows, great.
Or we were talking, you know.
Yeah. I think, and honestly, I'm, I'm just gonna speak openly here, I think that a commitment from the town of Brooker at that fifty percent level would certainly convince this board to say, let's go ahead and move forward with it, but I think that's, there's gotta be a mutual agreement on, on both sides. I think you're, you're gonna be, getting a benefit of the, of the response, um, and you know, the county's gonna be getting the benefit of collecting the, the assessment on those. But I think there's gotta be that mutual benefit.
And I, I just want to tell the Brooker, um, Mr. Melvin, I don't know the other lady's name, Bree. The county's took quite a hit over this thing the last several years, Ben knows, commissioners know, all the commissioners were here when all this happened. The, the fire department budget used to be like three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the sheriff took it over and it was five hundred something thousand dollars that year that the sheriff's office had the fire department. Then when, when they had and did it with full-time people, we, uh, the sheriff hired part-time guys. What was that first budget, Ben? I don't remember, three million, two and a half?
I think it was five point two, I've got it right here as a matter of fact, uh, but it was, I believe it was five point two million.
Now, that, that would be the current budget, because.
Well, with, I'm sorry, that was fire and EMS combined.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see here.
So the county's taken quite a hit off this thing, I mean, it, it's, it's hurt, the whole time I've been clerk here. It, this has been very, very hard and stressful trying to balance a budget, and it's almost impossible. Like I said, we ran into good last year just because we made five percent interest on CDs, and besides that, it'd been running red, so.
It was, it was, uh, one point nine for fire operations in, uh, in twenty twenty, and then five point nine total, uh, between fire and EMS.
And now they're ten together.
Well, that was including the fire apparatus for the appropriations, our actual operating budget's about eight, right at eight million.
Okay, okay.
But it's also important to remember that you can't buy a gallon of milk for the same thing you did back in twenty twenty either, so, I mean, the price of everything has gone up, I don't, I don't think that's from mismanagement or from, from anything.
It wasn't the numbers from twenty-five percent to fifty percent.
Uh, let's pull that back up. So the fifty percent for residential was a hundred and sixty-seven, twenty-five percent was eighty-four dollars. Which brings in a eight hundred and forty-three thousand annually. With twenty-five percent, fifty percent brings in about one point six million.
This is strong.
You be nice to me.
My question is, so we have residential, and then we have vacant. And you showed a picture where the two vacant were forest. The forest tend to have used more manpower. But they cost less, they're, we're getting less money.
They're not actually charged at all.
Right, so my house is gonna cost hypothetically a hundred and sixty-seven dollars, but you're gonna have a forest fire that's fifty acres or seventy-five or a hundred acres, and they're gonna pay forty-seven dollars. But it's gonna take every bit of manpower that you have, plus more, plus another county, and they're only gonna pay forty-seven dollars. But you're gonna knock out my house with five people. Where's the fairness?
I, I agree with you, I, I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, a fair split. But what they do is they take the calls that we've had over the last three years, and they look at how many of them were brush fires, how many of them were residential structure fires, how many of them were at commercial structures, and that's how they get that breakdown of what a residence is gonna pay versus what a, uh, commercial structure versus what a vacant parcel's going to pay. And if anything is ag exempt, that's set by statute, that's nothing that we can control, and everything here has to be, we can't adjust those rates. Everything's done, it's, all has to be relative and done by the, the percentage of what the calls that we run there.
I understand the ag, but the vacant. Forty-seven bucks, twenty-four bucks? I mean, I saw you guys pass my house a couple of days ago, going out to the massive fire on two twenty-five.
Yep.
And all of the trees and all of the manpower. Um, you were out there and you shut down the road. If that fire had been assessed for forty-seven bucks, that's unfair to the residents that are paying a hundred and sixty-seven bucks. But you want people to pay the hundred and sixty-seven, the board wants the people to pay a hundred and sixty-seven, but that massive fire, how many acres was it?
Six or seven acres.
Six or seven acres, but you shut down the road for how long?
How long you shut down that road, you know?
You shut down the road for two hours, how much manpower did you have? Was everybody?
Seven.
Six, seven, not many.
Okay. It was a, it was a lot.
Yeah.
Because you had troopers, you had police officers, you had brush trucks, because I counted them when they passed.
Sure.
Um, they were the first to go on the scene, and then the, the trucks went by. So it, it was a lot of manpower that went, other than five. It, it's unfair.
And, and I'm, I'm not arguing those numbers at all, I, I, the, the methodology that we use to determine these, these rates, um, was done by our consultant, our consulting firm. It's been court-proven, it's, it's a very reliable way to collect this data and to generate these numbers. I'm, I'm not a consultant, so I certainly don't know the intricacies of it, but, um, again, that was the methodology that they used, and that was the, the numbers that they came up with and how they were split between each, uh, between each type. I understand your point though, I, I do.
I guess I'm looking for the, uh, a fairness to, to it, and, and it was kinda like Mr. Steele brought up way back when in his nineteen-seventy-something mobile home, that by the time you got to his mobile home, there's nothing there.
Right.
And so it's the difference of someone's brand-new five thousand square foot home, it's gonna be a difference, um, in, in the two. And, um, there, there has to be some leeway. Um, so it, looking at the numbers, it, if it's not ag and it's vacant, what, what's the manpower?
Yeah, I think they look at it based off value as well, right, a home is more valuable probably than the, the property.
Right, I understand that, but when you're looking at a forest.
Yeah.
You're using a lot of manpower, and the forest is less, and you could be. Or exempt, and you're there for, you could be there for days.
Sure, I see your point.
I will say this, I do agree with you, because I've already talked to him about the same thing. But, but at the same time, that's the way it's set by the state for the, for the ag and everything, so, there's nothing we can.
Change if it's not ag. Could those rates be changed if it's not ag?
No.
No, no, I don't think, without, without going back through and doing a, a full study again, um, I don't think those rates could be, rates could be adjusted. And you can't adjust an individual rate, like I can't say, okay, well, the, the, or this board can't say that the residential rate's gonna be three hundred, but the ag is only gonna be twenty or vice versa, right, they can't say that the, we're gonna keep a hundred and sixty-seven for residential, but ag is gonna, or but the, the vacant is gonna go to, to two hundred dollars per parcel. They can't do that individually of each, uh, type, property type, they has to all be relative, and it has to all be done in sync, so if one moves, they all move essentially.
Okay, is there any other questions? Alrighty, then we're moving on to our last item, the, uh, public, public hearing dates, do you have the, the dates, uh?
Yes, sir, I do, the first hearing is July the first.
Okay.
And the second hearing is August twenty-first. And just so you know, the, the notices be mailed to the property owners be, between those two hearings.
Okay.
And then corrections and complaints can begin to be addressed when the notices go out.
When the notices go out, okay, alright, and when the notices go out, we'll put a, a number in there for, so the people can call.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, yes, okay.
Can I make just one more comment, just to make sure that everybody's clear, this is not a fire department versus the community. We, all we wanna do is provide the best service that we possibly can, I love this community, love everybody here, it's, this is not an us versus them type thing. This is just, we wanna provide the service, how this board, again, decides to fund it, is, is up to you all, and, and again, we're just trying to provide options and provide justification for what we do and what your, what your money goes towards. But again, I don't ever want it to be painted as an us versus them, take a lot of pride in this community, take a lot of pride in our department, as you can tell. Um, and I have a lot of love for this community, so, I'll end with that.
And we appreciate you, excellent, alright, yes.
So are we going to put this, if, if Brooker can provide whether or not they're going to be in, then we can put it on next week's agenda?
Um, yeah, I don't.
All I would say is, yes, we can, we can move as fast as you want, I just wanted to state for the record that I think we need to know what Brookers commitment is, because we're basing the personnel off of that fifty percent assessment. So if Brooker is not committed to that, and that's okay, that's, if that's what they're saying, then we need to probably back up and reassess what we wanna do with that station, how we're going to staff it, and at what level, I think we, in fairness to us, to be able to plan, we need to know what Brookers going to do, so we can have all the cards.
Exactly, o- otherwise, we'll have a building there with no staffing.
Right, and we'll have the item on the agenda regardless, if, if, if we're not prepared to move forward with it, then you can just table it.
Okay.
Perhaps, Mr. Melvin, you could get with Mr. Corningay or, and let us know maybe when your council is, you know, what that decision has been. That would probably help them when they break before the board.
And you said it's Tuesday?
Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Yeah, it could be Tuesday, so.
Okay.
I really just, I can't speak on behalf of this board, I think, one, one person, I chair the meeting. Keep it organized, what they're feeling on this here, uh, is quickly understand.
This may be a holiday, but since indicated when you're going to have a meeting, maybe it would be helpful if, if Mr. Carter, you know, would be willing to attend and maybe address any questions that your council has, maybe that would help them in their decision process as well.
Yeah, I'm sure Chief Carter would be more than happy to, to do that.
I'll be there.
And I'll be there, um, so, well, if they can vote, then we can get an answer.
Okay, that'd be great, alright, anything else coming forward, board? Meeting's adjourned. I have talked to her five thousand times.